Buddy, please silence or shut off your cell phone and join us in the clip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Melanie, we have changes to the agenda?
Yep, I need to table resolution number 2020-03C until our next work session so we can find out some things. And then I need to add a loader purchase for Mr. Berman.
Okay, thank you very much. More to any additions or changes? I have none. All right, with that, we're going to, in our agenda, we're going to work Mr. Berman in before we get to this go on. But first off, we have the budget hearing, so it's scheduled to open at nine o'clock. So, Andy, you want to get, we'll open up the budget hearing at nine o'clock. Would you like to do a little bit of overview, Pam?
Sure. This is for our 2021 approved budget that the committee approved at the end of April. We publish it in the paper and then give the opportunity to the public to comment on that work that was done. So just to summarize, our approved budget right now is 50 million. The unappropriated ending fund balances and reserves total 22 million, so we're actually appropriating around 28 million for county operations. The notice is also on our website, so if the paper wasn't very clear in small print, people can go to our website and see how our budget is laid out in terms of categories of expenditures and then by department and FTE in those functions. So, that's quick summary.
Thank you very much. We'll leave the hearing open and so, being we opened it, is there any comment at this time? Crowd goes wild. Thank you.
All these people too, most people I've ever seen in a budget hearing. Next steps for our budget process, we will, if there are any changes that people know of before we adopt, but we'll look at adoption on June 16th, June 17th.
Good. And we'll have another hearing tomorrow in four hours. Yes, thank you. Are you going to attend that meeting or you want to just run the hearing? And if there's questions, what works for you?
Well, it actually has work well for me to go up.
Yes.
So I will, I'll attend for that tomorrow.
That's exactly where we get the public comment.
Yes.
Next one. Thank you.
So I will go up tomorrow and then I'll come back in the meeting a little bit later for the audit contract.
Okay, perfect. Yes, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so our addition, Mr. Berman, I think we're relatively past coming up here. Mr. Berman is looking at potential purchase of a used loader. Go ahead, sir.
On the, the airport and we, our loader that we have is on, it's still operative, operative.
Operational.
Operational, thank you. But it's on its last leg, so we want to kind of update our loader throughout the airport and we utilize it as fairgrounds throughout the county. Actually, we're a pretty good loader. Anyway, on the, on the public surplus thing, there's one on, and it's, it's an auction. So I wanted to ask you guys to prove to have the authority to bid on this piece of equipment. I have ten comparables out there with the other, the same type of loader. And I would like to, I guess, the highest I could bid on would be $12,500. It's at $9,000 right now to bid on, so I just need authority to actually bid on.
And this auction closes 11 or 12 today. This is from a municipality that put it on a public auction. Municipality in the city of Bend. I know you've done some research, you've talked to them, and for a used loader, this is a pretty good chance.
It's just got $2,100 on it, it's an 82, but it's perfect for what we do at the airport and at the fairgrounds.
Well, for, for the safety and everything, we used a lot at the airport during the winter, around the gas pumps, snow removal, a lot of different things. So, the one we have actually had it back on my work to throw to department now, it's landfill, so it's, it's due. So, I don't have any further questions. Is the board having questions? Consensus of the board to allow Dave to bid on that up to 12,500? And the funds will come from different funds, from the airport, through the board, and your capital. Yeah. Consensus of the board?
Yeah. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, so let's go on fire, seeing enough day. Mr. Schulmberg, you, you lead us off, I believe?
Okay, we got quite a crowd here today. I guess I'll introduce myself. Barry Schulmberg, you're an agency fire staff officer for the Fremont, Monima National Forest, Lakeview District, BLM. We got a real good support group today of line officers, agency administrators, and fire leadership. So it's okay, we'll go around the room and do introductions.
Absolutely.
That'd be all right. John Casbaum, property leader for Sheldon Hart Mountain National Wildlife Refuge.
Jamie Ludwig, field manager for Lakeview, BLM.
Andrew Taylor, fire management officer for Sheldon Hart National Wildlife Refuge Complex.
Suzie Suba, the Lakeview interagency fire center man, as the center manager.
Lisa McNeese, public affairs officer for BLM, and I'm also covering information for SCOPAL.
Tom Forbes, district manager, Lakeview District, BLM.
Mike Ramsey, district manager for Lakeview.
Dustin Gustafson, protection unit for Strovia, Lakeview.
I'm William Dunk, I'm the deputy forest supervisor for the Fremont, Monima, and I've been blessed by Barry Emmler to be the agency administrator for lead for the whole forest. A lot of beer.
So we've got reports that we'd like to share from Fish and Wildlife, Forest Department of Forestry, Forest Service, and BLM. I can start first, I guess, and then we'll go from there. As far as resource availability for this fire season, we're probably as strong as ever between the BLM and the Forest Service. We've got 11 BLM engines and 18 Forest Service engines. We've added two engines on the BLM side. They're going to be stationed in Clamton Falls this year. We've also got a fire operations supervisor who's going to be in Clamton Falls. And for, I don't know if you're tracking what we've done in Clamton Falls, but Oregon Department of Forestry has always had protection of the western Oregon operating plan of the checkered border lands over in west of 97. And come July 1st, BLM's going to have to take back that responsibility for protection. We will still have an interagency response. Closest resources will always respond throughout all of South Central Oregon. But we will have more, more of a BLM presence over Clamton Falls. So, just a quick update, right now we've got 13 Type 3 incident commanders, four BLM, eight Forest Service, and one Fish and Wildlife. We've got four hand crews. We've got the Lakeview interagency veteran hotshot crew in Clamton Falls. We've got the Monima hotshots. We've got a 10-person hand crew here in Lakeview and a 10-person hand crew in July. We've got two dozers, one BLM and one Forest Service, Forest Service dozer is in Chillicothe, and one water tanker in Chillicothe. Aircraft this year, our helicopter, I don't know if you noticed it, just showed up this weekend. And first day in service was actually yesterday. So they're getting familiar with the pilot. It's the same helicopters last year. It's on a two-year contract, same company. And just a different pilot this year. Seat planes, single-engine air tankers. We have one planned to be on here mid-June, right here in Lakeview. And our air attack platform came on yesterday in Clamton Falls, so we have that air attack platform ready to go. This year, the Forest Service has made a commitment to bring on CWN air tankers, which is called when needed. There's going to be 36 CWN air tankers in addition to the normal air tanker repertoire that they have. So we've got lots of air tankers. They're going to be on a 90-day contract and should have a fair amount of availability for air tankers. They're going to be spread out across the west. There's also going to be a surge of helicopters. They're going to do 30-plus helicopters across the west. And we're actually getting one of those in Lakeview also mid-June. It's going to be a Type 2 QV. It'll start in Lakeview. We'll provide the manager and whatnot for it so that it can be functional for fight fire. And, but it may go anywhere. We'll see where, see where it lines up, but this is considered its home base for this fire season. So you can see that everybody's committed to increase in aircraft. The emphasis this year is to keep the fires, you know, hit them hard, contain them. Use the resources we need to be efficient and keep the fire to the size that we can contain it quickly. Yeah, emphasis on initial attack. The very large air tanker situation, Clamton Falls got approved for Dlat. And it's not official yet, but it's, they're determining some final, big work on that. But that could be a backup very large air tanker base in the future. So that's a nice addition to, to our area down here in South Central Oregon.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I know the Clamton Airport has worked pretty hard at that. They've just got some kinks they got to work out because we've got military over there. They've got a new, what would we call it, taxiway on the east side and just trying to decide where it's all going to be. Some of those, we, other changes across the Forest Service, we have Zone, Chillicothe, and Schmolt. I know that's in Clamton County, but that, it's now called, it was on the Zone. And we'll have one fire management officer for Chillicothe and Schmolt. Like I said, we've added that fire operations commission there in Clamton Falls. And his name is Luke Jackson, and he has started and making great headways with the local community over there. And he's going to be a great addition to us. The other thing, I've got a lot more statistics and things like that, you know, as far as prescribed burning. As you all know, we did do very much prescribed burning this spring. BLM did a little bit. But I can carry with those numbers for you as well if you'd like to hear where we're at year to date.
Sure.
Okay. On the BLM side, as far as burning, just north of here, Clover Flat, above Valley Falls, they, they've accomplished 900 acres so far. And in the south corners, we've accomplished 145 acres of burning. That would be burning a pile of different parts. Cutting in Clover Flat, almost 2,000 acres. So there's really been some really good work up there. And then I'll leave the Fish and Wildlife stats for Drew. On the Forest Service side, last fall, we've got accomplished almost 20,000 acres of prescribed burning. So quite a, we had a really good fall as far as that, that. We were looking forward to more prescribed burning this spring. It didn't happen due to COVID-19 and, you know, the threat of smoke and people's health, so we backed off. But we've also accomplished 25,000 acres of mechanical thinning so far on the forest. And the money that we didn't use for prescribed burning this spring, we, we put it into mechanical treatments. So it didn't go for naught. We're still getting some good work done out there on the forest. Your handout here, this handout right here?
I want to go, a question on your, on your CWN 36.
Yeah.
Called when needed, that's really interesting. What's the priority that you call in? Is there a priority way that been set up?
Well, what's been explained to us this season is most likely, you know, it's possible they're going to be a chin air tanker. Depends, three air tankers that have a home base due to COVID-19. We don't, in the past, you know, you may work all day and land and stay in another community.
Right.
So if the air tanker starts in Moses Lake, Washington, it needs to end its stay in Moses Lake, Washington. And that will help the pilot and the crew and whatnot so that they have some consistency there. So if we're in, if we have a fire going on our area and we're re-loading out of Clamton Falls or Redmond, we just have to know as incident commanders that by the end of the day, that, that air tanker, they'll tell us that it needs to return to that wherever it came from from that start date, wherever it's assigned from. So it may cut off at the very end, but it may not. Just depends how far away. If it's Redmond, you know, you're pretty much working to the end of the day anyway. If it's Salt Lake City, they got a little further to go. But, you know, those, these air tankers, these days move pretty fast and they can get there pretty quick.
So that's interesting, you know, COVID, the COVID-19, I need to put it on that path. But there's just pilot, co-pilot almost, right? Seems, seems like that there could be dedicated camper places within every area where they, if they need to stay overnight. They will stay and then you'd have that much longer that they'd be able to be on the incident.
And what we're trying to do is we're trying to look out for the pilot, co-pilot, you know, so that they don't get sick. Because if they're out then, then you know, there's only so many backup pilots. And, you know, so it's important to keep them healthy so that we can keep those resources available.
Thank you.
Any questions? Other questions? Okay, so just real quickly on the handout here that you both have. This is the outlook that just came out here yesterday. We don't have any. Now we're getting up to. I was kind of curious about that. I went through my papers. No, I don't see it. Yeah, very much. A short tweet this year, but if you can look at, you know, it's got June, July, August, and September. And they're predicting for us to have a very dry, hot summer with significant fire potential in July, August, and September. As you know, southwest Oregon already cleared fire season first of May. You can see that June, they're already showing in the red there in that corner. Although they have gotten a pretty good amount of rain in the last few weeks over there. But they're still significantly dry. So the bottom here is our energy release component. This kind of gives us an idea of where we're at from time to year. The red line is the maximum that it's ever been. The gray line is average and the green line is currently where we're at. So we started off, you could say, pretty normal, maybe slightly below average. But we do have predictions that we're going to strike right up there. It's going to get hot and dry. We'll probably be pushing that some maxes there for energy release. We did have a 111-acre fire off the Silver Lake Highway this last weekend on the Schmolt Ranger District just west of Silver Lake, too terribly far down that Silver Lake Highway. It was in Old Bogging Splash and was spotting, had some wind on it, was difficult to contain. But it gave us an idea that, hey, our fuels are pretty dry. And so it's going to be one of those seasons where we need to certainly try to initial attack as efficiently as we can and get on and make sure that the fire doesn't get away from us because our fuels are pretty dry.
Caused the fire this time here?
Light, light, yeah, we had some light.
There's their big thunderstorms.
There's also a fire on the Clamton Marsh that went for 450 acres, the same storm from light. And, yeah. Page two, this came from Bedford Weather. Maybe you can take a quick look at that. Preconditions are for Lake County, near-normal snowpack. We know that's slightly less. And water year precipices suggest normal season. Forecast indicating warmer and drier than normal. And then lighting data, you know, he's kind of, what he's trying to compare 2022 is the 2001 and 2008 fire seasons, which suggests a higher chance of nocturnal lighting. Nocturnal lighting can be a bit of a problem for us because obviously that's happening at night. How long do you keep resources on in the evening for lighting that may or may not happen? Especially if it happens at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, you know, those are things that we'll wake up to and have to hit it hard and deal with lighting fires as they happen. Looked up some stats for 2001 in the northwest. 600,000 acres burned in 2001. That's actually kind of low. 2008 was only 250,000 acres. But if you compare 2001 or 2008 to 2002, 2002 jumped up to a million acres. 2002 is a big year here locally. You've got the Grizzly Fire, Winter Fire, Toolbox Fire, all in '02. And then 2012, obviously Berry Point Fire, 1.5 million acres burned in the northwest. 2008, if you remember, was a big year for California. And that's where they had a whole bunch of storms that came in at night, had a whole bunch of starts. They got a whole bunch of large fires all at once. I know I went on two fire assignments with my incident management team in California. And it's also, you know, the year we had the helicopter crash with Graymane Crew, things like that. So that was a really tough fire season for Region 5 California. So again, what we really, really depends on our fire season is lighting. We have human start fires. That is a factor. But lighting really is the key around here. We have nocturnal lighting that adds another bit of difficulty to it, it can, but, you know, it's something we train on and go forth with. I guess the big message that we're here today is that we're traveling down a path that we've never been down before. We've got a fire season and we also have to deal with COVID-19. And it adds complexity and difficulty, especially when we get into large fires. And having an incident management team with a fire camp and whatnot where we have to bring in a lot of resources to help suppress the fire. So we're working with all our partners to do the best we can with that. That made discussions about spiking our firefighters out on the line, have them more dispersed. We're not going to have a typical caterer where everybody's in the fire line. You get your plate and you get to go dish up your salad and everything. You'll be handed the, this year you'll be handed a box of food. That's it, you go away. And, you know, nobody's sitting around next to each other, things like that. So it's going to be different. There's certainly be some challenges. And, but we're working through those the very best we can to make sure that we can, number one, provide for firefighter safety. All these fires that we have, that we potentially are going to have, we've got to be able to do it safely where we're not adding extra exposure, you know, that we can't keep our firefighters safe. So that's one of the key things. You know, if we do get into a large fire situation, we may be needing to do some rapid assessments of folks that are coming in. There's still a lot of discussion on that, that we may have to do some, you know, testing. We may be having to ask for help, public health nurse or officials to help us get them embedded with the team so that we're making sure that we're keeping everybody in our camp safe and we know their health conditions. So that, that's something that we're, we want to keep in mind. Another thing is fire restrictions. Currently, we have no fire restrictions on forest or BLM or Fish and Wildlife or federal areas, other than the Clamton River Canyon right now, which is a traditional thing we do with BLM. Paul Lynn Dustin talked about fire restrictions on private property. Right now, as you know, we open back up our belt rec sites on the forest. As fire restrictions come closer and closer, we'll probably designate those, those belt rec sites as places where you can have campfires and we'll, you know, have more restrictions on the dispersed recreation that we traditionally do. But the idea is that we don't want human-caused fires from campfires that were left and adding smoke to the air and hurting people's health, things like that. Potentially disposing of unnecessary smoke. We're certainly open to contractors working in fire. If you have any questions on that, Suzie helps, so, you know, make sure that we have the contractors. They do have to be already signed up and ready to go for fire season. The extra thing that contractors are having to deal with this year too, though, is they also have to abide by CDC rules as far as being prepared and being safe. So with that, do you have any other questions?
I guess a little bit of concern when you talk assistance for public health. That's a appropriate place to look, but we, our public health is pretty limited on the group of employees. Yeah, I don't know if it's them or if it would be the hospital that you're trying to run some kind of screening to be able to get people in fast or whatever. I think now's the time to sit down and talk with the duty and with hospital or others. Because if you, if there's an incident, we need to get people out and out fast. Now is the reason for finding.
And we'll, you have those discussions. We also might be getting public health officials from outside of our area to help duty and others. You know, we may get somebody assigned to incident management teams. Just let me know that there's going to be potentially somebody in that capacity that will be screening firefighters to some level of degree. We're always doing, you know, right now we're at that, where we're doing the self-test, just like we all do every day. You have temperature, you know, feeling sick, things like that.
Yeah, it's changing the times.
I think the other thing that's different this year right now, the Southwest and Alaska are picking up their fire seasons. The Southwest traditionally brings in a whole bunch of extra firefighters for, you know, just in case they pop a big fire. This year, they've been asked to not do that. Only bring in extra firefighters if you have the fire that wants them. We could get, you know, I'm not going to, I don't know, but we could get into a scenario where our contractors have a hard time bringing together crews, could have less firefighters. And we get a bunch of fires in the northwest, you know, when the hard time rolls around. It could be, it could be interesting trying to cover all these fires and get them put out as small a size as we can.
So real quick question on the contractor side of things. You were talking more like the contractors that went down to California to fight the fires from here in Oregon, places like that.
Yeah, they're available.
Yeah, actually, I think there's going to be an issue on that because a lot of the contractors, they're, they struggle with getting paid for the work they did in California last year and stuff. And so this year, California and Oregon, pretty much the entire west coast is looking at a very, a massive decrease in their budgets. And so I just don't know what that's going to look like and how much the contractors are going to want to look in, look, look towards those kind of jobs, basically, and go in and go in and fight the fires.
Well.
If I'm misspeaking on that, I don't know.
Where we, where we lean really hard on contractors is engines and hand crews. Let's talk hand crews. A lot of times you're bringing people in that normally aren't working or they're waiting to join that crew, but you've got to have a fire sent to. So what's their health before they join them? You know, do the, do the contractors need to bring them on well before they? So what's their health before they join up? You know, do the, do the contractors need to bring them on well before they actually have a fire? So they're, they're struggling with that whole serpentine disease control and how they're gonna do business as well.
James, you were talking about state budgets, right?
Yeah, state budgets largely. I'm just kind of curious what.
So I don't, I don't think our federal budgets are going to be affected.
The federal budget won't affect it at all.
And, and the contractors that we have are already on a contract. They've already indicated it's not a, it's not like.
That I guess where my question was going is to how the states' budgets are going to be affected and how the federal.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Dustin talk for a moment. That was yours, buddy.
That's all, that may be more for, yeah, a concern for you, so.
You know, the only thing else I could say is that if you get into discussions about fire season and with the community and whatnot, it certainly helps to have people talk about defensible space. That they have, you know, debris cleaned up around their, their property and whatnot, so that when fire does come, they, we have a better chance to suppress the fire. The other thing is to be smoke ready. We remember a couple of years ago how smoke was for months and months, whether the fire was in California or well north of here, but it seemed like no matter which way it blew, it was smoke. So that if they can get their homes to where, you know, they can be smoke free and make sure their windows are secure and things like that. And then if we get into a scenario, which we've never really had here before in Lake County, where we need to get people into clean air or shelters or whatnot. You know, again, we have to think about COVID. We can't put everybody into a gym. So we gotta worry about spacing and things like that. So we may need more and more place, you know, for cleaner shelters and things like that. Just some things to think about that we're always thinking about leading up into the fire season. Okay.
All right. Okay, Dustin. Want the short one first or you want Dustin? I don't have a whole lot. I'm Drew Taylor. Nothing to know for Sheldon Hart Refuge Complex. Again, I know all you guys have been very covered a lot of it. Looking at this map, you know, our fire outlook covers most of Nevada as well, so that would also, you know, consist of our Sheldon Refuge. So with COVID being a big emphasis this year, I mean, we've just been dealing with changing policy guidelines, best management practices. I mean, mine and Barry's and Dustin's and a lot of these other people's, and I'm sure your time's been spent with just trying to stay updated on the most recent guidance and recommendations, so. But that being said, we've decided to, we're going to be staffing our two normal type four engines, but we're going to insulate the modules from each other. In case one gets sick, the other one's still healthy. Since we have the refuges, we're going to have one engine stationed out at Sheldon this year and one in town. In the past several years, we've had boat trucks stationed out of town, so they're more viable for all the partnerships. And we typically don't get a lot of fires on the refuges, but this year, just to try to insulate them, we're going to have one out at Sheldon, one in town. We will swap them around like once every month if people don't get burned out, but. We also have our extra type six engines and I did hire, was able to hire a qualified, third qualified engine boss as an assistant. So we have the flexibility. We get into severity conditions instead of bringing in outside resources. Just for severity, I can throw two guys on that third truck and that will give us a third Fish and Wildlife engine, Sheldon Hart truck, for the whole partnership to be able to use for IA. And it's, we get busier. So that's kind of my plan. I'm going to try to not bring in outside resources unless we get something going to where we need outside resources, like Barry was saying. If we got large fires going, we need them, and that's going to dictate that, but as far as getting bringing in an extra truck, I'm not going to do that unless I absolutely have to. So just want to make sure Forest or BLM knows that if we stay staff, our third truck, it's for everybody to use. So, end of the statement. Fuels wise, this last spring, we had beautiful weather, perfect snow conditions, get a lot of burning done on Sheldon. Got about three hundred acres out of the six hundred we wanted to get done, and then COVID hit. And nationally, Fish and Wildlife decided with respiratory stuff going on, chances of people getting sick, you know, some of them go check their burns. They just shut us down for burning. So we did get half of what we wanted to get done, done. We'll get the rest this next fall, hopefully, the rest that we had planned for, if we get the right conditions. So I think we got two hundred and seventy six acres out of the six hundred we wanted to get done, and that was univer piles on Sheldon Refuge. We also, do follow up seating with need of grass seats on all those burn areas. All that got completed at least before we kind of got sent home. That's about all I really have. We're hoping we can kind of get into somewhat of a normal, normal routine here in the next week or two. Once all my camps, I did five, I hired five camps and they're all from out areas. So we decided, since we have the multiple refuge bunk houses, we brought our guys on early and we're able to do two weeks of isolation away from everybody else. Just to make sure that they're not sick. And we had four come on last week, so this, this week, everybody will be cleared. I can put my trucks together and we'll be doing our normal, normal routine. Staffing our trucks, one at Sheldon, one in Lakeview. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on how we approach that kind of issue with out area camps. That's how we decided to handle it, just because we actually have the housing available to do so. Didn't want to bring in the first cases in Lake County. Now there's been one here anyways, but anyways. But that is all I got. Unless there's more questions.
Morning.
You guys want to read something?
Get me a cup of coffee, like beer, bro. Dustin, I'm gonna say something. I know you guys are scared like you. So kind of a quick rundown for us, you know, right now, we're looking to be for status quo. That means eighteen engines between Klamath and Lakeview, seven are out of my unit, the lake unit, between the lies over Lake, Lakeview. ODF in our district has two water tender dozer combinations. One in Klamath, one in Lakeview. We have one B six on a low volume Klamath. One long ranger helicopter with a heli-tac crew in Klamath. And then one type two helicopter bucket ship in Klamath as well. That's a statewide resource that essentially stays in Klamath. And then a detection fixed to the platform that's based out of Klamath Falls, too. Statewide, I know we have something about thirty aircraft between single engine air tankers, helicopters, bucket ships, heli-tac crew, and then a large air tanker. I think this is the last year for the DC seven. It's either this year or next. Be done, not for this year. So that's kind of a rundown of our resources. Permanent personnel, pretty much the same. There's been a lot of movements in our district. And then I finished up here, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. Did fire training for about forty adults in custody. I think it's about forty of them, so they can staff a couple of crews. Questions on our resources?
Well, the only question I had was relating to contractors. Okay, because that's just been a part of conversation that I heard going on last week.
So I guess to address that. Kind of go around about the answer here. So you know, the governor has asked state agency because of the economic downturn, I guess it's the recession now, to put together kind of a list of what an eight and a half percent budget reduction would be. That's eight and a half percent for the biennium. So we're halfway through the biennium, so that becomes seventeen percent for the fiscal year. For ODF, for every dollar, for our fire program, every dollar of general fund is matched with a dollar of landowner funds. And they have to move together. So if you take a dollar of general fund away, you take a dollar of landowner funds away. Seventeen percent could turn into thirty four percent. That sort of reduction would impact our local district operating budgets. So that would be, in some areas, it could be crews, engine crews, could be parking engines. Could be not hiring so many people. For us in Klamath Lake District, that would be not having our helicopter contract through the long ranger in Klamath Falls. It would not impact personnel. And then it'd be some other things that spurred maintenance in other areas where maybe cut out supplies and make up our level of the cut. From an overall picture, though, when you talk about hiring contractors for fires, I have never seen an issue with contractors overly getting paid from the state. You think from our big fire seasons in the last, when it was two thousand eighteen, I think that fire season would cost the state something like a hundred million dollars. We're talking a pretty small drop in the bucket compared to the overall state budget of buildings, whether it's a lot of buildings, something like that. With that note, but I haven't seen that be an issue. Our, probably our largest issue, I don't know, there's a few cases under the bus, but I'm going to. Our, our largest issue with, with paying contractors has been our agency's cash flow issue, which is a lot of that stemming from the federal government's delay in paying. Reimursing us for, for different things, whether it's FEMA fires and FEMA reimbursing our agency or VLM or Forest Service processing payments and reimbursing us. And that has put us in a large bind to be able to have the cash flow to continue regular payments.
Locally, though. Is that your comment?
Well, I will say that. Locally, locally, the folks here, they're great. They can easily settle up the payments pretty quickly. It's the problem with once it goes to Albuquerque and the slow grind it takes to, right, Albuquerque to get that payment ready.
And I, and I don't know what they do in California, honestly, as far as some of the fires that they have down there. I know that we had a lot of guys going down there to help out with some of the fires in California originally, and they were talking like they were having a really good time. Maybe some of that is, some of that, that cash flow issue, I don't know. I just was kind of curious what issues that you guys were having in terms of the contractor system here. It sounds like there aren't any.
I don't anticipate any as far as, you know, pay them. It's just been a little slow or payments been slow just because of the cash flow around them in there. But I think from where we were a year ago to where we are today, there's been some pretty major improvements on that cash flow. We aren't done yet, but we're, we're getting there. It's a topic of conversation at the legislative level of kind of change in the structure of how ODF pays for fires. Setting aside money that's paid versus how it's been in the past, is ODF pays for the fire and then we go to the legislature and ask for money to fill our coffers. Well, we don't have money in our account, but it's pretty important.
Right. I won't go into what my projections are on whether or not there will be money there in the next couple of years, but I'm just leave with that. Thank you. I have no more questions on that.
So I have a comment, which is sorry to come to you, it's for, for everybody. But all my fair board has, that's generally where most fire camps end up if there's a fire close to the Lakeview area. With COVID nineteen, we'd be spread out quite a bit. I'm sort of interested if that's still potential for a fire camp out there and if we as the fair board need to look at opening up more area. It'd be a pretty, pretty rough area to build a fire camp spread out here and things. And I'm honestly looking for dollars for our fair room because it's going to be tough on them too. We might as well try to capitalize as a partner. So I'm talking openly and open minded here. We might need to go beat some sage words out. We have ninety nine acres out there and it might be a benefit for you guys also to build, spread out. So any thoughts, any brainstorming? I said on the fair board, come to the fair board and let's, let's think about that before we need a fire camp. We don't have no place to get and spread out, if that's potential. Just there's a lot of people here, sitting here that's involved in that. I'm looking for money for the fair board and trying to make it safe for the firefighters at the same time. Just don't have to speak about it now, just put that, think about it, see what we can do together.
A lot of people's minds are really swirling here right now.
Well, it's, it's just a different world with this COVID.
I'll take a crack at it. Barry will correct me, but I, you know, I could see a couple of different things. Either a fire camp, you could have a larger footprint than what you've had in the past. To spread folks out more, or as Barry alluded to, spiking more people out near the fire line and supporting them logistically with a smaller, like camps. And then, so the main ICP would be potentially a smaller footprint because everybody would be kind of scattered about over the area. So it could go either way.
Yeah, what I see. You know, you could see us still using the fairgrounds, but it would only be the incident management team. It'd be a place where crews would and resources would come and check in, maybe check out, but that might be the last time you see them.
Yep. Because they're. Stationing areas, different things. It's going to be a different look all the way around.
But I think it's good to know that there's some capabilities there and if it's needed, I mean, we don't usually show up all of a sudden tomorrow, there's a thousand people. Takes a day or two, so then use some time to get some sage words knocked down. Not much.
Not much. We had two fires last week apparently.
You have a question, Dustin?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I wish you got that question for us. Suzie's got a big speech prepared. You know, Suzie's our new center manager.
Yep. So this will be her first official full season, and so we're glad to have her.
Detailed the lot, but.
Detailed, yeah, yep. She's wearing the big hat down there, here at the fire center, and they do a really good job. Of course, all the agencies are represented.
Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
It also hasn't hit the newspapers yet, but I wanted to let you know that Jamie Ludwig was selected as the new Lakeview field manager. She'll be in that position permanently.
Officially now, finally. Thank you, everybody. Very much appreciate it. Be safe. I don't know what to say. It's COVID nineteen. All I'd like to say is it has to go to the side to build, to keep catastrophic fires that big. Like you guys have policies, procedures and things you have to deal with. Sort of scary to be honest with you, whenever we have potential with all the fuels and fires up there, the guidelines get half off their life. I'm glad I'm not you guys, to be honest with you.
So I guess I do that one more. So you guys are all following the CDC guidelines, which is odd to me since you're a government agency. The CDC is private. It's not government. Even though everybody thinks of it, I'm just kind of surprised that we're following those guidelines.
We've used the best available science, and that's what we got right now.
We can use the best available science, and that's what we got right now.
Assume.
That gets informed. That information, like you said, that gets used for our, for our Office of Personnel Management, who comes out with rules, then it comes through the department and then down through our agency. So it gets adapted. We have a playbook. We just got last week for reopening, you know, to align with what the county and state's doing. So very similar. And we'll be going through the phasing process to reopen over the next six weeks, maybe.
So, so I guess I'd like to put you guys at ease for fire season a little bit. Things are going to look a little bit different. We're still going to show up, the same number of firefighters. We're still going to fight fire aggressively. Some of the procedures of how they get there, where they're camped, how they eat, some of those things might be different. But it's not going to look that different than.
Right. I do so. I appreciate that.
Yep. It's just another risk to consider when we're out there. And there's numerous things that can kill firefighters immediately, you know, rather than COVID. So it's something we're going to continue to work through and manage as best we can.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I'm just going to add one for the candlelight. I'll be glad.
Say that.
All right. I'm going to recommend a five-minute break for those people, please. Thank you. Barry, how's it going? Thank you, Barry. So we're going to come back to this session at one minute after ten. And so we do have a ten o'clock hearing, ordinance twenty. So at ten o'clock, I'm going to open up that hearing. And I believe Buzz and Jason is here to do a joint overview of ordinance twenty proposal. Am I correct?
We can. I wasn't sure what the process was after the last work session, so.
Uh, we have, now it's passed the draft form to the actual ordinance that we will have two hearings for. And if there's comments or things come forward that we need to change the ordinance before possible adoption, that is what the process is now. Usually a little bit overview of the ordinance, why you change. And I'm looking, I didn't mind at all.
Do you need me in that? Do you need me in that microphone?
Do you have? Come on up.
You want me to do this, Jason, or?
Huh? No. You've been spearheading it, so.
All right.
A bit forward.
So ordinance twenty is a light kind of weed ordinance. There's actually been an ordinance on the book for quite a while. I'm not exactly sure when the original ordinance was adopted. I want to say it was nineteen eighty-six, but I'm not positive.
Eighty-seven. The last one on file was eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, okay. So.
I don't have. Trying to be sure. This is, this is the most updated one that's in there. And the bottom of the page is the, some of the changes that we made, excuse me, Buzz. I just want to make sure he has it.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So what this, the new ordinance is basically an update of the existing ordinance. It, it establishes a weed district, which is the entire county. It establishes a weed board. It establishes a kind of weed supervisor to implement the ordinance. What it does in addition is it sets up a process to develop a, a noxious weed list that doesn't require reopening the ordinance every time you need to add a weed to the list or take a weed off the list. And it also sets up a process for administration and enforcement of the ordinance, which the existing ordinance on the book had none of that. So.
Yeah. So when I, when I looked at the old ordinance, nineteen eighty-seven, so there, there's a point in the state, there's ORS that says you have to have a weed-controlled district. And it says ordinance, but it's pretty much just the formation of the weed-controlled district. It didn't have an ordinance. So it says ordinance, but it was just the formation of.
Right, right.
Yeah. So that, this is kind of updating that to kind of what we're supposed to be kind of.
And the reason cooperative weed management area is, is wanting this ordinance updated. And we'll get into that with the presentation for the CWMA is that the fact that you have a weed, that county has a weed ordinance, has a weed district, has a weed board, opens us up, opens the ability for the county to get grant money with controlled noxious weeds. And it's a pretty good chunk of change, and we'll get into that in the presentation. But right now, it's six hundred thousand dollars a year. Okay?
So, yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the conditions of grant dollars, and rightly so, is weed-controlled district ordinance and some kind of program going on with that. So that they're not just throwing money away, that there's some kind of structure behind it when they step away from it.
We'll get into the details of that.
So, so our hearing, you gave us an overview. Appreciate that. Appreciate after the work sessions and review. We looked at this, make some recommendations and thoughts on this. Appreciate those being put in here, Buzz, being some further than that. Especially on the effectiveness degree. Whoever's done it. She gets overlooked all this time. Sorry. So however that, I appreciate that very much. So I, if there are any public comments on, we have a hearing open, we'll leave it open for a while. And we'll move on to now your presentation. This is, oh, weed management area of. Only have. Our pitchers.
Like, I don't have to look for that.
Yeah. Try it anyway.
Well, and just back to the ordinance, probably you're looking that up too, is the ordinance is local law, so it gives some enforcement fee within ordinance for landowners that don't comply.
Right. And that was initially, that was my thought. We, we're getting great compliance with the cooperative weed management area, but there's that little tiny subset group that we need the ability to say, well, yeah, but we really prefer you working with us, and you must.
So just for, so it's a perspective like, so we'll pick a county that has a pretty strong one.
So I want to de-religiate just a little bit here. So this ordinance, does that give you power and teeth to deal with the state agency, the federal agency for not taking your leave? Don't be so open on it. I couldn't.
It.
It does. Because whenever I sprayed weed, we got that compliance a lot.
Oh, yeah. That, that's a big one.
It, it, it really is. Whenever you have a farmer, the producers trying to take care of their land, government agency has property next to it, then a little to no control. And it, it's, I know you get asked that question. I'd be a little bit facetious, but it's real. You get.
Oh, yeah.
And obviously, I dealt with it myself.
Yeah, there's, it does provide some teeth and provides some incentive for that happen. There's also some ambiguity, so.
Right. Well, and, and with most agencies, coming from a long career with an agency, it's a lot easier to get cooperative compliance and work together than it is to try and go the important route because there's a million excuses why we're not doing okay. And you can talk yourself into it for him. So.
So, and I figured that's where you would go, and I appreciate that because I'm sure there's some contractual agreements and everything. Not about ordinance, but true with that. CWMA and different things, the partnership with the federal and state agencies has been pretty good.
Well, and they've been very supportive of the CWMA, and it's actually, it's actually turned into a, a program where if you're dealing with a noxious weed issue, and I'm talking about the CWMA, not the ordinance, if you've got a noxious weed problem, you've been at it long enough now that you can really erase the property boundaries. And everybody can kind of pool their money and pool their resources and deal with the problem irrespective of whether it's BLM or Forest or junk or private or whatever. Case in point, Napa Weeding, Warner Valley, Medusa Head, and Warner Watershed. We're dealing with some issues that were, were really just, where's the infestation? What's the problem? And get the players together so everybody knows what's going on. But you're, you're erasing the property boundaries.
That, that's, you know, that's the way we worked too back in the day. Generally, a lot of the times, the person that blamed it on the other agency was justifying them not spraying sometimes.
Sure. Well, and there was, you know, we've come a long ways because, you know, even five years ago, there was a significant number of chemicals available to be very effective to treat weeds that the BLM and the Forests couldn't use because they hadn't done the vegetative management EIS. Well, that's all done now, and that whole EIS has a process to adopt new chemicals. When Dow comes up with, you know, better mousetrap, you can get that adopted on federal land without reopening the EIS. And so that's been, I mean, even if you think of, like, Medusa Head Dry, you know, the, the chemical to use is a mazepic. And for years, you couldn't use that on any federal land. If you hadn't done the EIS, so now it's adopted, they've been through the process. And so, and there is a process.
So, yeah, I was, I guess my other point was, so like, say, Kirk County, they have a pretty strong program. I talked to the head guy there, Kevin O'Henry. They, they never use, like, three or four times a year out of all the people in Kirk County, it's just a, a little incentive to push.
So before you start with your presentation, I have a question. I'll go ahead and ask it. The importance of having an extension agent here compared to weeds and for our producers and everything, have a thought on. I, I guess looking for support to try to get an extension agent here in Lake County. And I, I know that my days were bringing the extension services, the extension agents key to a lot of things.
I had thought about this a little in town. I kind of had it, I just.
You thought I might go there, you thought I might go there.
After last week, yes. So in the past, we ran an extension agent, Pete. And anytime a weed thing would come up, it would get something to me. And it would work good because I always had the dollars to go treat it, or I'd find a way to make it happen. And so that's how we kind of dealt with it, our cards in the office. Not saying Pete never went out and looked and stuff, but even starting last week, I had producers calling me at the West Side, like, hey, we have cattle dying. We come out and look and it's kind of a, I think of it as a service. It's kind of the service that we don't have an agent to go look at or something like that. And it's not totally outside of my realm, like I went out and looked at poisonous weeds, but I had some ideas about cattle, so that's what else I do. So it's kind of, yeah, I don't know how that's going to fit, especially if we share an agent from another county. Are we going to provide those services to our?
Well, and it's, it's bigger than just the livestock side of the security too. I mean, from a, from a retired wildlife biologist, state wildlife biologist, we, we worked with extension a lot to, you know, talk about lake abert shorebirds and water issues. Pete was way involved in that. And to get the producers together to talk about that issue, the next one won't. You know, and so the lack of an extension agent as a wildlife biologist for me would be very scary. I mean, because they have a, they have a bridge to the agricultural community that wildlife side equation doesn't necessarily have. You know, so that's a whole nother piece of. Yeah.
Well, I, I think, following your question on, there's so many pieces of puzzle that we're used to and that we're comfortable with. And Pete was an extension agent, and he's still fielding questions, which is inappropriate. This is what I'm concerned. That just shows the need to have an extension agent here. So I guess, and I know I'm getting a little sideways here, but support from many agencies or anything to issue that we need an agent sooner than later.
I think so. I said last week, the guy, it's four, five, nothing. No, no resources to go to.
Right.
Fortunately, we're, we think. Came from no resources.
So with that, I know I'm probably a little sideways, but the whole board, I, I think I'm sort of speaking for the whole board, our concerns. We're, we're the governing board for the extension service, for the taxing industry side. So we're the governing board, not with our commissioners head on, it's by ORS that we as commissioners become the governing board. We, obviously, Jason was a lot of these reasons, but for our producers out there, all of them, I had to put the biologist side of it in.
Oh, that's huge. Was huge.
What the thought of that?
And if you get, having worked in counties where you didn't have the relationship with extension that we have in Lake County, it was a breath of fresh air to come back to Lake County and have a group of people you could work with that included extension and, you know, agency. And if there was an issue, you could go to Pete and before Pete Judy and say, okay, I need, here's my problem. I need some producers to bounce some ideas off of. And it was that fast. Here's the people you need to talk to, proof of current president in Lake County Stockyards Association. You know, that kind of stuff was huge. It was huge.
Well, I'm really glad I asked the question now because I missed that component.
Yeah.
Really. On with your presentation.
All right.
Yeah, because we could talk about.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the reason why I went there is for everybody has a voice to express the need to always you, not the extension service here, but to the campus.
Yeah. We, we work with CWMA a lot. We help with the research, Barra, yeah, something with the weeds and the agent, yeah. Yeah. There's a lot of back and forth support too. It wasn't just one way or another.
Guess I made Jason a day.
Yeah. All right. So with the commissioner, I'll listen to the commissioner. Uh, maybe, I'm not sure if you guys were here last year. Anyway, we're going, they were. We're going to hit on what CWMA is and then what we're kind of doing for the county, how it fits with countryside versus. All right. CWMA, what is it? We're a private entity that kind of combines with the public entities, BLM, Forest Service, so we can work across boundaries. CWMA's can be a physical area, a basin, political boundary, county. CWMAs can be a physical area, a basin, political boundary, county, or a problem area, just a. You know, we have a certain weed species here, we're in focus, have a CWMAs just for that. There's twenty seven of them in this. No, go ahead. So there's twenty seven of them in the state, ours is one of the biggest ones and probably. I say it in the land, probably one of the most successful ones too, as far as grant dollars you brought in. A lot of them focus on just a couple of different species, we have. Ten projects, we have fifteen, twenty projects a year. So. See, there's kind of the gap, if there's a gap, there's usually a mixed run weed program in there anyway. So they just don't do CWMAs, they just don't do the CWMAs.
Columbus County has a really extensive county weed area. That the county funds, multiple employees, and so they don't have, really have a seat of.
Some of them do, like Tri-County, like Wallo, Baker U, they have a CWMAs in addition to their. They focus on just a couple of species a year. That's important, avenue for funding for them, so. It's eighty five percent of the base of the state, so. Do cover a lot of ground, and then we work with, the CWMAs are pretty closely tied to Oregon Department of Ag. They come to our area, they call us, where's the problem at, where do we need to focus our our attention? Or is there something that you didn't get grant funding for, the county's not getting work and we fill in that void. A lot of times they buy away stuff or maybe a problem landowner, where they can get ORS involved, state law involved. And get it taken care of, like if there's a. New species that's particularly bad, that might. Yeah, agricultural commodities, like wild carrots and mackers, we produce a lot of carrot seed up there, so. Um, we partner pretty much every agency, pretty portion of Lake County to. We all seem to get along pretty well. And makes things a lot easier to go across the boundaries and get some bigger projects done, I was talking about earlier. Neighbor next to federal land, you know, we go do both at the same time, where the federal side can't go do the private, but they can follow us money, so. So kind of gonna look back about where where the CWMAs started, started in two thousand and four, did four or five projects a year, mostly. Oregon Department of Ag or Oregon Watershed Enhancement. What Grace is called, the pro project manager, was part time, seasonal. Then we went to. What the county, when the county stepped in and had to provide funding for the weed supervisors. Kind of combined it with the CWMAs coordinator. Went from a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars worth of funding. The CWMAs, county provided that little extra so we had a full time person, then went up to six hundred thousand dollars. So that for a twenty thousand dollar investment, we got another four hundred thousand dollars out of it. And really expanded the program, allowed me to be on full time and do a lot more coordination with the state. Buy more services for the county. And those are all grant dollars, it's free money to spend most of my time chasing that around, trying to bring more dollars to the county.
They're generally all tied to a project, it's yellow start thistle up by Paisley, it's nap weed north of the town, it's. Prairie pepper weed out in Warner Valley, they're all, those dollars are all. Kind of have a a weed problem associated with it, but. You hire multiple contractors and you're putting money on the ground. You're erasing property boundaries to deal with problems, so it's working really well.
And so, you know, we provide education now so that. Keith Reed, you know, he's bringing weeds, we provide his education so he doesn't have to leave the county to take those classes to get his license.
I think the success story way back when was bronze place, it wasn't bronze at the time. We used state dollars back then and sprayed the nap weed out there. And I didn't think weed would ever be caught up with it, and now it's producing a possibility to. But that was, it was unbelievable, you know, so it was state grant dollars and everything, so.
Yeah.
I I've had the pleasure of seeing the success, so I really appreciate what you're doing. Six hundred thousand dollars, that's huge. And it it comes right back to producers and reparations that are helping and appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah, we also offer free equipment for people to use, so when I started, there was, I think, three contractors in the county, one of them was just strictly field guys. Out there and then a couple down here that were part time, like Keith Reed worked part time after we were spraying weeds. So we, I really pushed for the education so we get more contractors here to be able to provide the services, because we bring all the dollars we want in. But we don't have someone to do the work, right? Or providing providing an education to landowners to do the work better, more efficiently, more productive, if those dollars are different. Yeah.
So offer free or charge, but what kind of guidelines and what kind of equipment do you want out there?
Uh, so we have.
Just just a four wheeler or you have a boom truck?
Uh, I don't provide the four wheeler, but we provide the sprayers, backpack sprayers, boom truck, or boom sprayer that slips in the back and pick up. The sprayer fits in receiver ball. Yeah. And then so we go out there. It depends on the landowner, of course, if I think they're gonna be responsible or do a good job. This is why collaboration is important, you gotta go to a certain speed, get them mixed this way. And.
So there's some guidance.
Yeah, there's some guidance that comes with it and then we. Yeah, make sure that they're doing it right, if they, if I don't give them to, I don't give it to them, obviously, but. A lot of times, you know, we loan people a sprayer like this one. The next year, I never hear from them again because they went out and bought their own, so.
I I really like that concept, but. The thing is with that, you can gather cows with the same.
Let's call it multi-cow.
Yeah, so when you, when I come in to borrow it, you'll know.
Well, you don't, you don't get the four wheeler, you just get the sprayer. You gotta provide the four wheeler.
I've loaned for a couple times and that was a terrible idea.
Yeah. But, yeah, so we get a lot of producers that are starting to be better at doing their own, give them skills to. So I don't have to give money anymore, right? That's been a big help. Grand, grand dollar revenue, that's a big one, so if you look at two thousand and fourteen, it served this big uptick. So we're hovering around a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars every year. Two thousand and fourteen was the county stepped in and provided that full time, or the ability to have a full time person. That's when we started creeping up to the five, six hundred thousand dollars a year of grant dollars coming in. So. Actually, I think this year will be a little bit more, usually by mid summer we'll start getting annual best dollars coming in.
Do you think with the COVID thing, the grant dollars is gonna fall off some?
It's gonna hurt. Uh, ODA contacted me about a month ago and said. So Oregon Department of Ag is lottery dollars for the weed side. Look at half, maybe more for next year. Our ODA representative, they have the shoots county, Lake County, and then a little bit of Clara. That person quit. So we inherited the Harney County, Malheur County, Yell. And she had to cover his territory, while this this came, they cut her time half and centered it in the hemp side. So now we're getting less services from ODA. That's part of the reason why our program is so strong, we get so many grant dollars because we implement it well and they don't have to come down here, so. So we're the same people to worry about.
Or when they do come down here, they're not coming down here to solve the problem.
Right.
They're coming down here to see if it's successful. We've had some value.
Yeah, so it's it's gonna hurt, I don't know how bad, but I think our federal dollars are pretty safe, but. State dollars. Sure. Out of those dollars, that's kind of a quick breakdown, most of our money does come from Forest Service and BLM, the county's only three percent of our budget. Just can kind of give you an idea where that six hundred thousand dollars comes from, most of it's federal, some of it's state.
One percent from OEW.
Uh, that's for another little side, so there's. OEW. OEW, Oregon Department of Ag. Uh, noxious weed grant program, then OEW also has restoration programs that are separate from that. So. Like the pit project, like I had a small portion of the pit project, not necessarily Department of Ag weed dollars, it's.
I got, that's different, I just seeing that, I thought maybe you need to contribute more because of that. Poultry weeds come from waterways, a lot of water, a lot of that time.
But you see that the kind of dark blue orange, the ODA, OEW.
Seventeen percent.
Yeah, that's most, that's just weed dollars, the OEW is just the. Insoluble watershed enhancement projects.
It's a specific project.
Yeah.
So you'll have a specific project like the the North Warner Project, which, you know, that collaborative's been in before the commission several times, we talked about the North Warner Project. There's a piece of that that was OEW funded, the North Warner Project, there's a significant amount of that that was OEW funded, there's a piece of that that's specific. It's separate from the ODA grant, OEW funded ODA grant process. And so rather than the watershed council or the Forest Service or the private landowners that are involved in the North Warner Project. You know, the problem, they come to the CWMAs and say, okay, here's this much money to do. That's that.
It's kind of disappointing to talk about a lot, lots of funding, we were working on that. The big project with the Thomas Creek, I was part of that collaborative in Washington, a hundred fifty thousand a year for the CWMAs. To implement that and that got shut down. Yeah, so they put it off for another year, like the application was due here in June. And said, well, come back next June, we'll try this again and see what kind of lottery dollars we have to spin there, it was kind of disappointing. I I thought, I really thought we were gonna have some some major funding, it was a six year project, so.
So you just justified the need for an extension agent to go answer the question because you're so busy chasing dollars to keep the program going that you don't have time to bother. Noxious weeds, just to obviate it honestly.
It's it's tough, I mean, I'm one person, I'm in office, I'm just my computer at the house, driving around, trying to chase dollars and dealing with projects.
That's way almost every, I mean, non-profit, what I'm gonna say is. The director, the supervisor, whatever, he's chasing the dollars to keep the program going and then we did a lot of other big add-ons, so.
Yeah.
Anyways.
That's just a dollar or not from the last graph. Big help this year, so as far as county program, is the Morehouse Solar Project, we're part of mitigation for that. And as part of that mitigation, we get to spread the treatments around North Lake area. Doing small, ten acre vast projects. So that's been a big help, and we use those to leverage some other money too for the county, so we can scatter. Those little projects around, it's really easy to find money for a big project, it's tough to find it for a little ten acre sites. And that's a lot of what we have, a lot of small landowner properties on the west side. You know, we were having a discussion earlier about, you know. Private properties that border state property and some of these other sites. I know there's several spots in Summer Lake where there's been, you know, no weeds typically on the. The private owner's property, and all of a sudden there are weeds started developing, whether it was came in on its own tires or came in from hunters or whatever. On some of the OEW property, and then that starts spreading on the other landowner's property and now he's having to treat it. If he's having the problem, sometimes it's good to coordinate with that other, with the other entity, sometimes to make sure that. Best thing to care about, I can probably treat different sites right off the top of my head in Summer Lake that have that issue. Where, you know, he gets onto the landowner's side and he just doesn't know how to manage it, he's out there with a shovel trying to take it out.
Prairie pepper.
Yeah, and or or thistle or whatever else, you know, and he's leaving, you know, that root, he gets left in the ground and some of those, you know, it is. Yeah, hell takes his little. Just a little bit, a little piece of the root, that's just gonna keep spreading, but, you know, he doesn't know that he's trying to fight it. But it's not really gonna help anyway because as soon as the season rolls around. All the seeds on the other side of the road all go to bloom, and OEW didn't have that in their list to, you know, spray or whatever else that year. Yeah. So he just gets caught. That's, that's a big. Hard thing to fund, it's those little projects, you know, it's really easy to go to Dyer's, go to South Lake, it's easy to see, but trying to find that funding to go. Like, you know, I can't put my time writing a grant for attending a piece of property. But now they got, ODA, OEW's got a county grant with those mitigation dollars, I can move them around freely. Treat them for the places where we haven't had a program before. Yeah, yeah, if you have anybody, it's in my way. I will, yeah, I I tried a couple people, but they they don't call you apparently. I can't make them call you and I, but it's just, you know. And it's not that they don't want to go deal with an issue, sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, who's who's chasing the anger guy, you know, that is. I do get a lot of, uh, a lot of benefit not being a government agent. It's like, with the government, I'm here to help, no, I'm not, I'm a private guy.
Yeah, right.
We're just trying to help out.
That aspect is real.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it goes a long ways, a lot of, a lot of guys that. Have to speak strong fear of you because you're, what are you doing here now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm like, no, we're private, this is pretty, uh, invasive, we're just gonna help you out a little bit, so. And sometimes if they show, if you can show that you're also working with a guy on the other side of the property, on the other side of the road. As well as a government entity.
Yeah.
I imagine you do. That's like, so you have this problem, what about your neighbor, oh yeah, let me give you his number. Yeah, there's a lot of, like, a lot of that, so. This is an infographic I stole from OEW, you just can't really see it, just if it is, it's forever million dollars that gets invested in the county, it's fifteen, twenty four jobs, which is. I I figured we'd keep eight to ten guys on full time during the summer. Contractors and. Survey crews, a lot of the weeds for us, so. And that's all local people too that are providing jobs for us, so. There's a lot of that on that. The takeaway from this one is, those are all the site, project sites in Lake County that have been done since nineteen ninety nine, if I remember right, yeah. Obviously, you can see we're focused more on the south end, but the north end isn't quite as bad either, so.
Well, those, some of the areas that are bad on the north end looks like, you know, like the Silver Lake area. And west of the Silver Lake area, you kind of focus on that up in those. That's not the most Forest Service in there.
Yeah, and that's just the OEW money too, that's not all better. Forest Service, BLM projects. So where does it, how does that money go to, most of it's to application, I'm sure, right, almost ninety percent of it. It's all polygraph treatments, improving habitat. Proving right property value. Protecting our resources, so. Yeah, and a little bits of education, of course, with the the classes that we give and the one on one meetings and landowners, probably gets further than anything, but, yeah. Just so you know what we're working on, spot map weed, now we're on Gillistar Thistle, and then our EDRR, early detection after response, so a lot of these little species, they'll have some pezani. Purple blue stripe, not big sites, hard to find funding for, so we're able to lump those into grants.
I I just wrote down, what. I know there's different areas, but what do you think is the most invasive weed, like?
You said right. Angel grasses. That's it.
The scariest thing we're gonna make.
Yeah, we're talking about. It's a thirty to sixty percent reduction grade capacity. What is it, thirty to sixty percent reduction grade capacity? That's a big deal. It's a really big deal. And I don't have a great answer to treat it either. Plateau treatments in the fall, but sometimes we get great control, sometimes not at all, and for no reason, and it's not just us, everybody has the same problem.
So most, most people don't even recognize it, right, it's cheetah grass, it's literally, look, I, I, you know Jason out.
Yeah.
By Jeremy's place there, next to the prison, it's huge amount of deer, but I didn't even know it was even about. How do you treat that?
Oh, yeah, I've had several, several people come to me and say, what is this medusa head, right, you guys talked about, I said, why don't you just come over to my house and walk up here and you're. We'll walk on the hill because I've got quite a bit of. You know, and they don't know what it is.
Besides the loss of grazing capacity, a while that have that, perpetuation of fire, fine fuels, I mean.
Changes, changes a fire cycle, so in a normal sagebrush environment, your, your fire reentry cycle, depending on the. Vegetative component is anywhere from fifty to like a hundred and fifty years. Okay, you put in a bunch of annual grass into that. The first time it burns, it's still on that fifty to a hundred and fifty year, depending on the sagebrush. Maybe you go to annual grass without the sagebrush, now you're on a seven to ten year fire reentry cycle because of the fine fuels. Which is really difficult to recover that ground if it keeps burning. Recover it back to a sagebrush component that's gonna support a quintering mildew or a sage grouse or a burr shero or whatever, or a cow.
Well, that's interesting because where I'm talking about, there've been two fires out there. Man-made fires, but they spread faster towards the prison, but they, they wipe that out in like.
And if you think about those two fires. The first one was kind of, you know, it, it happened, but it burned a bunch of bitter rush up that ridge. And it burned the prison. The next one just burned more of a deuce head and cheetah grass. And get ready, that fire cycle is gonna be extremely hard to break with, uh, annual grass component on. Because it absolutely, there's a stack of researches high on how annual grasses change the fire cycle.
So, yeah, it, uh, that, that's the, that's the big scary. Anyway, you see a lot of overlap with our projects because of the, the Diresburg netweed.
Well, I would've thought maybe that's what it is, of course, didn't need that, deuce head.
Yeah, then all that.
In terms of the landscape scale effect that has, you know. Lots and lots of, it's annual grasses.
I bet, the county, we, fifteen, twenty thousand acres we treat, couldn't be a land force service in us. And it's, and we're not winning.
And the success in having found it.
Is pretty terrible. We're trying some new, new products now, but. Yeah, we have a balance. The go-to is plateau, it's like five bucks an acre to, for the typical. Some of the more productive ones, but they're fifty dollars an acre, so. Is it ten, ten times more effective? Probably not. Yeah. So, I guess, last thing I was gonna hit on is, what do you guys get for your dollars with me? We do the recertification classes, meeting with landlords, doing calibration for sprayers. Did the county weed management plan, that really helps the grant dollars, having that county-wide, like this species shows up, this is what we're gonna do, have a plan. Represent the county on the County Weed Manager Association Board. Which seeks, their main function is to get money packed from the state for the county programs. Essentially, have an equipment loan, do the mapping to the county for the weeds, share that with ODAO. Yeah, and biological control with USDA, this, we do the biological releases, they call us and say, what do you need? We do toad box and, uh, Christmas Valley, uh, Russian apple weed, more of that. Golf lies, Canadian thistle, those sort of things.
So going back to the Medusa head, is there any time, like when it's first coming up? Or you can graze it by any species?
There's a small window in the spring where it's still palatable and it's still greasable, and that's, that was the other thing. So we do work with Farah, Extension Office, to do some of those studies, and she's done a lot of work trying to entice animals to eat it better. But honestly, I think it's stock, yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just thinking in my head, like if we can turn out.
They did some studies up at, uh. The Research Center in Burns where they did some early spring grazing. But then you gotta go back to what's my grazing plan and say, can I turn out in late February, get this done? No.
That's what I mean, do the change, or some of the things maybe to change, because. It does affect the sage grouse, you know, the, all those annual grasses, but they're saying that's one of the top reasons that we're losing.
Yeah, the, the issue becomes, uh, well, with a species like Medusa head, I mean, cheetah grass is much easier to graze and, and longer duration. The stuff that Chad's been doing at, at the research, the range research station in, in Burns, you're talking three or four days. Um, from, on that annual grass, when it breaks dormancy, starts to grow, is palatable until. It starts to develop a seed head and those stebons that nothing wants to be bite of because it's. You know, depending on what the weather's doing in precipitation zones, it may be days, it's hard to design a, a grazing plan based on days.
Are goats an option where they use them in so many right ways, uh, California and everything, that, that doesn't always have to be.
Never heard of goats for annual grass.
Yeah, we did some stuff with, uh, Perry Plumley out here. Um, trouble is, it's, it's hard to replicate anywhere else, like. You better have goats, but, uh, they like to get out. Yep. Just trying to keep them in that target area for that small window of opportunity, and then trying to replicate that on the.
I'm thinking of my, my clover flower, all that is. One gift, right? What's the best competition for it? Is it just cheetah grass, what's the best thing?
Any kind of perennial, any kind of healthy stand perennial grass. And some of the research that, again, coming out of the, the Burnt Research Station now is. One of the, if you really have concerns about annual grasses, the best, some of your best success is crested weed.
Yeah.
So, because it's very, it's easy, it's easy to establish, it's very competitive, and ultimately, your perennials will come back into crested weed. Stand, and oh, by the way, it is very fire, fire resistant, fire resistant.
So, so are some test plots where they're trying to seed right in the Medusa head.
Yeah, with that and, uh, what's, uh, for Chocia. Rest of weed for Chocia, they're actually doing quite a bit of work with that now, it's kind of here right now. I don't know a lot of it, and, uh, it's late, so.
I know, there's, there's some, we've been, there's some crested weed just because, and we try and get the most organic stuff we can find, it's a, it's a good plant to use, but that's what we've used to fight it. As well as the fox tail barley. What exactly is the full difference between the fox tail barley and the Medusa head?
Well, fox tail barley is a perennial, it's a portium, portium, portum dubatum, it's, it's a perennial bunch grass. Uh, it, it doesn't do well outside of a very wet site. It, it, it likes to have a portion of the year with this weed water, um, so it, it. The crested weed grass is a lot better in an upland site and it doesn't do well in a, you know, wet site. Okay, uh, and so, but, uh, but fox tail barley is another, is a perennial grass versus Medusa head, cheetah grass, but not our all annual grass.
So it's, it's mainly differences to water difference and everything else, which is probably why I see it mostly.
Racked, racked, any place you irrigate.
And it's tough, so, I mean, we all know that it works good, it works better than anything else, but trying to get through. BLM to use that is tough, you know, that broad is really seeing so much native species. A, finding the native species to, the seed to do it is tough. They're talking like a ten, fifty percent establishment rate on native species, that's, you have a fire, you need to have something in there now to compete, not ten percent of what you're. Trying to establish, that's.
And they're, we've seen with some of the research that's out now, we've seen them. For fire recovery, we've seen them relax, some of the rules that you still. Depends on who your land manager is, specifically the individual, okay? If they're concerned about annual grasses and trying to recover this and knowing it's gonna take a hundred and fifty years to get it back into sagebrush. Sagebrush stand with a press through the grass under street, then they're easy to deal with. If it's only native, always natives, okay, then. Okay, fine, well, just grow some cheetah grass in the Medusa head because we can't get that, and the perennial natives. We have been extremely unsuccessful in getting the perennial natives to reestablish without a lot of extra work.
So technically the dictionary says the definition of a native is to be born there, so if that crested wheat sprouts there, it is native. Same with that cow that's born out of there.
The next time I get into that, I'm gonna use that.
So, I use, no, I, I, I've used, I've used it for years. Um, I would really be interested if, through some of your grants or anything, if there's any private lands that you could supply the seed and they just go ahead. And get it put out there in that Medusa head and do your own app, live, study.
I don't, I don't have that, we do do that, we do do seed projects, definitely, ours do restoration, fireline, basically.
So does, does crested wheat have to be drilled in or can, you know, some grasses can be flown on when there's snow and stuff and.
Grace said she did the juniper pile burn up her, um, above Big Lake, they did aerial seeding and she said it was awesome.
Yeah, but it depends on the situation, if you're, if you're trying to do, if you've got a. Effectively a virgin site, that juniper pile that's black and there's nothing growing there, and then you get the seed on, broadcast the seed on. Um, because there isn't any annual grasses in there, there's no tumble mustard or anything to compete with it, it usually works pretty good. If you're trying to do a broadcast interseeding, like you've got a Medusa head stand and you're trying to get some perennials in there. You got to drill it.
Yeah.
You're, you're just wasting your seed to fly it on or broadcast it on.
I see where you're going, but is, is Medusa head so aggressive and it has such a window, short window of growing time, maybe?
Oh, it's got a longer growing time, it's got a short window of palatability.
Palatability.
They're doing a lot of stuff with seed coatings and trying to, trying to tie it different, but.
Been a lot of places and it doesn't, Medusa have to drill it in because it's.
Right.
Range ground. And they're actually doing a lot of stuff with seed coating with native.
Yeah.
Native bunch grasses and native forge to try and increase that establishment rate. Jay Kirby and the Nature Reserve are the two hard working with. Uh, section five, the Northern Great Jason Range Experiment Station, the guys in Burns, they're all working together on some of that. I haven't heard Lake North, what they're doing, but.
So are we gonna keep going on?
Yeah, we probably better kick, crank it because we're gonna run out of time here.
You still have five minutes.
So, so we work with the, most of the. Oh, oh, we're good, phase lake, lake view. Since we don't have the scotties out there, plus the angels will destroy, can take period park and the community halls and fire departments. The rain's on fire, just out there. Yep. And the water users, that's always a big vector source is the, the issues, it's just, so. The water district. Summer Lake. Summer Lake, sorry, yeah. Yeah, and so when we, luckily enough, a couple years ago, ODA had this new program, there was only eligible for county funding. Only eligible, only eligible to counties with a weed program, because you guys had those dollars, were able to apply for those grants. And that's our EDRR program, where we can kind of move it around, do the smaller sites. I think this year they only funded five, five different counties for that, we're one of them, so. The range stay were from five to twenty-five thousand. So we're kind of in there. This year we're twenty-two or something. Yeah, make, that's a big takeaway, is that that twenty thousand is leveraged for a lot, like, everybody asks for match, they wanna see, even just a little bit. About a thousand dollars of match from county funding into this other, oh, the county's involved, that's another. Another, other half for, for writing cooperation.
And that's a great program because if you have a little investigation of something, you know, it's got special. On it, maybe you buy plants and like, I don't know what to do with it, you know?
Yeah.
Here, let us help you.
That's kind of been a big hole since I started, those little projects, they're very core, they can become big ones. But. So now we're able to go, here's our two or three big projects, we're gonna keep these ones at bay, kind of hopefully shrink it, shrink our problem. But then we're also gonna be able to focus on these little problems before they become big ones, so. Take care of big ones and the ones is very important. And when I. When I had my plan anyway, it was, you kind of needed three things, you needed, um, way to coordinate all that for grants, so it's keeping me on full-time. Being able to implement it, you gotta have the infrastructure, you gotta have the people to do it, you gotta have contractors, and that's where the education thing can, and. And then it's kind of last piece is that, that ordinance, being able to, we do have a drop in funding, but we can't go out and just provide the services for free, like. We don't wanna slip backwards, we gotta have that, kind of keep, keep moving forward, or at least not lose any ground. So, especially in the next couple of cycles, it's gonna be tough, and you kind of need that to not lose what we gained. Yeah. Uh, there's just pictures of our, um, biological control releases. And that's a good return on investment, there was bugs or ten bucks a piece for, like, you know, get a little box of them, hundred of them, but. It adds up quick and minimal, free for USDA, so.
So if those things, those flies, do they reproduce? Do they just die off and you have to go?
Um, we have a little trouble, so we keep doing, uh, Japiala. Next slide. I can't even say it. Um, they said it's really effective, but a lot of the collection sites for biological controls are in Montana. And we have a different climate, so we release them and they tend not to live the next season. So we're constantly happy to release and trying to get some kind of population established.
So you can start raising part of your bugs.
Yeah, and hopefully the goal is, is that we, we get these established here in this area, and then we can start collecting them. And then redistribute to other areas.
Those, once they adapt.
Yeah, our population adapts into this climate.
They must not be native to order.
No.
Yeah, we've been working with, um, University of Idaho, very. Upright person, does a great job, but like, there's a definite bottleneck on getting new biological controls out, like we haven't had any to go through in fifteen years.
Why is that?
The testing is so stringent.
Because it's, no, no, because it's, because it has the potential to become an invasive species.
Got it.
So the testing to make sure, because none of these bugs are native to North America, or they would, or we wouldn't, they'd be, you know, controlling the napweed forests. And so the testing to get a bug approved to make sure it's not gonna escape and wipe out. And so the testing to get a bug approved to make sure it's not going to escape and wipe out. And they could be a competitor for other species, you know, or kill all the sagebrush or something like that is a big deal.
So I tell you the neat thing, and I know both you've seen this, whenever you do that biological control and you go back and you see success. It's like some part of the green one, it's just like, yes, that, that's really cool. I actually would be somehow looking back when.
Yeah.
It's not a limit, it's amount. Musk this was a combination, I think.
I've had really lucky thing with this biological control. There's a lot of them before I started this job, my first one, they had a grace brought out a bunch of golf lights. I spread it out along the ditches, irrigation district, and it, it did a really good job. Some of them don't so much, but um it, it can be effective. Sometimes all their hours stop, yeah, but. Yeah.
It'll help.
Yeah. Yeah, if I can find funding, is the site small enough, I'll always treat it. But if not, like as you see, it's all napweeds or four wheeler. You know, we can't find the funding for it, we can't get it controlled, so biological control is how we can figure out something. Yeah, and then our EDRR, I made on that several times, that was pretty important. We have one leaky spur site in Canada. Another leaky spur, but it's a bad one.
I've never seen.
Yeah, that flower, the seed head pops, it'll throw a seed fifteen feet. And it just, it'll take over, like you go to Montana, there's leaky spurs, so it's like just.
What eats it?
You can graze sheep on it some, but early, early.
Yeah.
Yeah, some EDRR stuff is, is pretty important, that, that could be a big problem. We're catching really nothing, had money, different way to treat it, so. We didn't have to waste two years for a motorcycle to come through the pipe, this one just would happen.
Right.
And you said there's only one site that's really about that here in Lake County. It's a basically up here, Jerry Creek, and so yeah, so I don't really.
That's interesting.
And I think it came in on the OIM project.
And that water goes there pretty much.
Yeah, it was straight down to basically.
Yeah, I was pretty excited, doesn't fall away.
No.
Right, and it goes beyond basically.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, so anyway, education, we go to the state fair, help them get. Help the public and then provide classes for certification training and put along and then help develop too. Didn't ride along with them last year, it was fun. So there, I'll just watch the guy do it, I guess.
We, we used to put the county spray truck on the flat car.
Yeah.
Back in the nineties, spray one side on the way down, fill up, and spray it. Took two or three trips again.
Yeah.
The, the railroad, I, I've experienced spraying for the county, Scott's does it down there, that I could ride the four wheeler up and lay it down and stand on top to try to spray it.
Oh, yeah.
Next to the lake, I blame California, the weeds just come.
Yeah. And that equals, and that's classic, the slide before this, and you can, like, rise the state line, you can see a difference. And then I guess, yeah, implement the, the kind of land spraying. But that the right way.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess Paul and I talked about this yesterday a little bit.
Are you going to slide that shows a minute?
Uh, I thought so, but it should be. Should be right there, well.
Okay, so the county provides and.
Yeah, it's uh.
You know, you provide it, it's twenty thousand for the, the weed supervisor, weed board program. And then in addition to that, there's uh four thousand dollars to the railroad right way off the bank, you know, out to the vent. Um, there's about four thousand dollars for the airport. Uh, twenty-five hundred for other county lands, that's the part that the four wheeler track out here, the fairgrounds. Um, that's industrial part, you know, wherever there's an issue. Um, and there's another one.
Well, see, natural reactions, I had a different budget coming up, did you?
Right, that's, that's though, so there's.
Right.
But all of that is, if, if all of that is, is obviously used on county land. But then there are other issues now going forward. So his position as the weed supervisor plus leverage and keeping the weed program active.
Except, I think I had, we had eighty-three hundred in the spray budget for the killing.
Right.
And then, well, like this year, we burnt through fifty-five just to get the airport up to, at the A code.
A stands.
Standards. Yeah, because the budget I had before was only a thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you for what you do, I do appreciate it very much. A lot of people don't realize the impact of the, of the weeds on so many different things. I, the component you brought forward on the. Site for the, the state for the habitat and everything of that site that. I never paid as much attention to, you know, I always focus on producers for the most part, you know, the time, the safety routes and the things.
We got it in, I'll tell you.
We're, we're seven minutes over, so you got one minute.
Okay, Laurel County nineteen eighty-five had a terrible napweed problem on the hill ground that was affecting the grazing. We have W realized that one of the reasons we were having so much trouble with big game damage, deer and elk damage to private lands in the valley. Irrigated alfalfa, meadows and that was because the napweed was competing with. The forage on the uplands that where the animals really wanted to be, okay? So we put together a bunch of money in cooperation with the extension agents, with the SWCD up there and sprayed. I think it was a hundred and twenty thousand acres of napweed aerial application, okay? And in two years, watched eighty percent of the big game damage drop because of the animal, because of forage quality. Because you knocked the napweed back, the animals weren't down on the valley toward, they were up on the hills. To me, that was real early in my career, but that was the success story on why you manage weeds.
Good.
Hey, good, so. Did I go over my hair?
So thank you guys very much. Is there, is any, anybody here have any comments on the weed ordinance at this time? There being no comments, we're going to close the hearing on the weed ordinance at eight minutes after eleven. We'll leave the other hearing open until Andy's back. Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Jim, yeah, thank you guys for.
Sorry to go over, Jim.
We are going to do a five minute.
Oh, okay, make everybody wake up after.
Well, I can come back.
No, I, I can actually. Uh, come back in session thirteen minutes after eleven. OIT carbon offset study presented by LCRI.
Yeah, so we wanted to give you guys an update on the carbon offset study, um, if we have time after, afterwards to catch you guys up to speed on some of the other projects we're working on as well. Um, and I'm not sure much, how much of a background you guys have on the carbon offset study that was done by LCRI before, so I'll just give a brief background. Um, in twenty thirteen, a study was completed, uh, took about two years to, to complete. Assessing the carbon offset value of renewable energy projects in Lake County versus uh gross carbon emissions, abiotic carbon emissions specifically. Uh, and I think that included all projects that were existing as well as those that were planned. Um, and the findings of that study showed that, or estimated that about ninety-three percent of abiotic carbon emissions has been offset by renewable energy in the county. Um, which, I mean, it was, it was a good study and it was thorough, but it was not peer reviewed and it was not of the quality that could be published to, to a scientific journal or anything like that. So we have been doing some fundraising, um, and we secured funds a couple, about a month ago now. To actually partner with organists through technology and fund, um, a master's student to go through a master's program and update and revise this study and get a peer review and publish it to a scientific journal. And expand the study as well, so it's not going to be looking just at abiotic carbon emissions, it's going to be looking at biotic carbon emissions as well, hopefully. And we estimate, you know, since twenty thirteen, there's been quite a bit of renewable energy development here. So by Jim's calculations and the estimations that we've done, we were confident, um, that we completely offset our carbon emissions. But this study will be able to tell us that objective precisely when it's completed. Uh, and it's going to be completed by the end of spring term, twenty twenty-one, so about a year from now. And we'll get started up this summer, bringing on a master's student through OIT, uh, getting him started with the project. So we'll have a peer review, um, scientific study for the county in a year. What do you think of carbon offsets?
Perfect, that's really, I can go back to a lot of years on all this. Um, what does that mean for leveraging dollars or making Lake County enticing to move to or, or produce here? Will we get to a point where weed, weed are a business or solar has offsets they can sell? What is it for a hundred percent plus?
Well, my estimation, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong a lot of my life, so it could be another one, but anyway. Uh, we, if our estimation's right and this study proves it, we will far exceed offsetting all our emissions. We will actually be helping metropolitan areas. So if a cap and trade or another type of bill passes, which I think it will eventually. Um, that means if we could, I believe we can go to the legislature and say, look, we've offset all of ours. Under the last cap and trade, it said that, uh, uh, you know, that we wouldn't get any of the revenues generated by it. Since we were not part of it except for five years, I think, or five years, something like that. Well, I'm saying, let's get it now. Well, that decision should be reimbursing us for the work that we've done already. Plus, if we build more solar or geothermal or whatever, we're offsetting more metropolitan areas target. So we're actually doing a service statewide, so let's use that. And then to attract businesses, if we could get the legislature to do, say, those counties that have exceeded theirs, done it, have a fair review. Then you're exempt from that legislation and that tax on oil, gas, diesel, et cetera, what it be, ag, logging or whatever. I think we've got the opportunity to attract companies here because we don't have that tax on it.
Right, and we can retain, retain carbon negative as we expect.
No, that's the vision, uh, whether we can make it a reality, I don't, I'm not sure, but it's the vision that I think is worth going to pursue.
Absolutely, I, I like exactly where you're going with what you're saying. There, there has to. Hope things in the workplace, say, let's, we could exempt from some of the things and then be attractive for light industry or other industries that come here. Or maybe it's where I've been all my living career is job retention here, but then it helps our sawmill or throw light or logging site and it helps keep them viable. So you keep that resource.
We see, we see the market is shifting toward the development of carbon based market, you know, it's really just evolving right now. And I think we're kind of ahead of the curve on, on measuring and publicizing where we stand on how our emissions and carbon offset. So I think it's going to be, you know, it's going to increase the value as these carbon markets continue to develop. You know, it becomes more of an area of focus on a statewide level. It's hard to estimate exactly how this study can use, I mean, on this, but it's going to be, I mean, very versatile, I think, there's going to be a lot of different uses for it.
I think that's when I asked you to form a county statewide, countywide with the city, basically, county, Lakeview and stuff. And that could include college, it could include the, um, agriculture, county association, whatever. Because it's all an economic benefit, we can show that to all, to all of us. And if we have a unified lead county going forward, was an idea like we just talked about, we're all agreeing on that. And boy, can we, maybe make a difference.
Prevent level protection as well for the industries that do exist.
Well, well, in our, our activity, that, I mean, that was, one of the great concerns with the cap and trade is. Most of us have pretty outdated tractors, you start putting, putting out business.
We did calculate that original study, so county caps and haul and stuff, that is how to affect that, make that more positive. Now, there's a whole bunch of stuff I think could, could be added.
So the importance of the peer reviews to give proof to the legislature that we've already met those rules. Instead of just.
Sorry, I didn't mean it.
No, just, instead of just lip service saying that we have the documentation saying that we've met those, that criteria of zero.
We can't.
Right, anybody can say, stand up and say, we've met it, but that peer review makes it.
Yeah, it'll be published.
Independent of us.
Yes.
And I want to say, you've got to thank Nick, when I called around the University of Oregon about the cost, his negotiation, I thought it was half. We've been after a whole bunch more money, he got it down to work. Oh, and the Oregon Community Foundation funded enough to, to do that. And he got it down into that range, that's so hard, we've been after it a whole bunch more.
We were excited how it turned out, um, and I think part of the reason that, how much it costs. So initially, we looked into having Oregon State University do it, um, but right now, we're kind of focusing on building merchant relationships with OIT and try to keep things more local. Um, and I think this is a big opportunity for OIT as well, and they're going to, to really pull their resources to get this done right. Uh, something like this really hasn't been done on a state or national level, so it's an opportunity for OIT to show their expertise and anything to themselves as well at time. So it's a pretty big deal all around.
That's just good negotiations, bringing up those benefits for them, they saw that.
Really because of this may be the one thing getting ahead of it is peer reviews, it really, really helped Lake County. And I think we're hitting it at just the right time. And it'll, it will give politicians, local politicians the ability to go to the legislature and say, this is what we have, we have the facts, we have this. We want you writing this legislation that we're exempt plus, or we're above and beyond. We will help it off the state before.
Because the cap and trade is coming back, we know it will, because the, I mean, even during COVID, the governor actually decided to use fifty million dollars and grant that to ODOT. For a study on implementation of cap and trade. So.
So we need to.
We, we know that this is moving forward.
And it does, yeah, it certainly has, you know, political and social, you know, value, has its political and social capital, but it also runs kind of parallel or in tandem with. Um, the, a documentary that was recently made about, I'm sorry, I don't know if we told you guys about this. Uh, but a, a group came in and funded a documentary looking at rural eastern Oregon communities and how they're managing their natural resources. Um, and promoting renewable energy and sustainability. Uh, they went to Sherman County, Willau County and Lake County, um, and they ended up making about twenty to twenty-five minutes of the documentary just about Lake County. So they're very impressed and very interested in what's going on here. Um, and that's going to be released all across the west coast in Oregon as well. And the funders of that film, their goal was to, as they stated, it helped decrease the social barriers between eastern and western Oregon. So coming out with that documentary, showing these public screenings, you know, that's going to help. Lake County build social capital and really have our voice heard on a state level and show, you know. Uh, disprove the common misconceptions that eastern Oregon communities and counties don't care about natural resource management, when in a lot of ways, we're, we're far more progressive than western Oregon counties in the way we're doing things. So when we do show this documentary, um, and we do have this study completed, those things will, will complement each other perfectly. Uh, and really that's just, just getting the vault room, there's a lot of opportunities to fill all of those two projects, uh, and make that a proven. You know, shine a spotlight right on Lake County. With the documentary is done, we were actually supposed to have public screenings like in Portland and, um, and a couple of other large communities in Oregon. Last month, but obviously COVID put us off to that. They have, um, two screenings scheduled for next week, I don't know if they're still going on, they have. They have two screenings scheduled for next week. I don't know if they're still going on. They, we haven't heard from them. We were discussing whether they were going to do it. Still. But for these initial screenings, this would be like the airing of the documentary. They're, they're gearing it towards a political audience. So they're, you know, wanting to invite.
I don't think I've even seen this documentary.
They, we're, we're not like allowed to show and share it yet. But we did take a lot of, you know, we're pretty. I guess we're initially to participate in the documentary, but the way it was framed and the way it was done. Is we're extremely happy with it. It's going to be a very good.
Talk to Alger Theater. When we are allowed to show up, we're going to show up there.
Yeah.
So, and I talked to you about you guys establishing the committees countywide. And if you want L C R I to pick it up, I can volunteer, Nick.
Well, I think we need to be careful.
About getting politically tied in. I, L C R I, I think we need to be careful.
Yeah, so it'd be great if you did it because.
Because you guys want to stay.
We need to remain nonpartisan.
I really like to do that. I think that does help.
I think so. That's appropriate.
So can you get us what we need to do as far as doing that?
Well, you guys are just looking for.
Participation from town like you. And I don't think it'd hurt to include the logging industry, columns, and like the ranching community.
So that's probably what you're looking for is who exactly you guys think would be appropriate to have on this so we can. Form that committee. We have that goals in mind, of course, once that committee is formed, just what we're forming that for.
And they should go, that committee should come up with a unified goal for the county. I would think.
With the timeline on the study being done as well as the documentary being done, there's like, there's some kind of coordinating project or that.
Unless the cap and trade comes up quickly in the legislature, then we'd already organize and ready to go. I keep thinking, I keep forgetting that political side.
So, clarifying, maybe I'm just not paying enough attention. What would be the, the purpose? Of the committee? What would be their main goal? What's the main purpose of this committee to put together? So that, that's what we have to, there's going to be a commissioners committee. We have Bill say, this is, this is what we're asking the committee to put together for us.
Well, I would think that any legislative action on climate change would. Give forgiveness to counties that have already met the goal of needing those changes, forgiveness from that tax or whatever the criteria is. And the benefits generated by that tax for non-communities that have not met would come back to help us do more. So that we can have an urban, rural connection because we are helping out the urban areas of the state on the gold side.
So in a lot of ways, we're actually form, we're asking to form a committee with, and giving them the goal and purpose. Of presenting an argument against cap and trade or at least. Looking at what we can do in terms of advocating for the county for.
Well, I think we would be willing to support. We might be willing to support cap and trade if this criteria that we needed. We're not subject to the tax under it. And that we're, we're not excluded from revenues since we've already done our part. They could do more.
You're going to need farmers on that. You're going to have some sort of, have some sort of representation from farmers.
Because everybody's good at cap and trade in Lake County unless we can show how we can do it.
Right.
I'd say the goal is, is we anticipate cap and trade to come back. We need a voice within the cap and trade. To represent Lake County very good. And, and away from the political side of it is. Because most everybody's going to propose cap and trade with the, in the Lake County.
Almost do, almost to give us these exceptions.
We, we need to, we need to work on what would be our argument if, when cap and trade comes back. Why we should be exempt and the benefits of us being over our neutral carbon offset. Make sure that's in the legislation.
Even if that comes in the form of a carbon credit?
Yeah. Yeah. And we, we, commissioners come and go. And we all have our political battles we take. So that committee needs to not be politically either. It needs to have something that they're working on objectively. See what I'm saying? Because the three of us may fight cap and trading similar, but have very strong opinions going by. The committee, you will have that same kind of people that will want to fight along there. So like, this committee needs to. Look at the benefits of being carbon neutral and impacts that means when cap and trade comes.
It almost, Jim, it sounds like maybe I, maybe I'm wrong here, but this is almost starting to sound a lot like Lake East stewardship group in terms of like collaboration. But just on a different topic, community collaboration around.
I mean, I don't, I believe that, well, as we've seen over years and years, the West is good, they're good, but the North's good past. Now, can we influence that and support it if it benefits us?
Well, I, I sort of like where Nick just went because of, it's going to take. You say it's not L C R I, but it almost will take L C R I to be the leader on this committee to help present this stuff.
And it could be.
Maybe you're not political.
And that, yeah, it looks like the Lake East stewardship group, we're just a facilitator and a neutral group that brings these folks to the table.
It's able to say all the work.
What I think you guys need to just have your, your L C R I have the committee. And use us as your partners in it. Because when it comes time to go testify. The commissioners will have a little more clout maybe. And you guys can come along with whichever one of us go and. And, you know.
Certainly never hurts to show community participation in decision processes like that.
Because I think once you involve us in the committee, it's going to instantly be.
So whichever way you think it works best. Do you think that's the best way? Well, we're, we're doing whatever.
Because you guys, the way you're set up, it's unlike the stewardship group, like you're saying. I'm just a different topic. You just use your, what you have right now.
Well, how about this to kind of take it off you guys a little bit? We could make a recommendation. Or we could, we could tell, ask you guys, asking you if you would mind being the convener. Of a, of a group such as that to bring those parties together. And then.
Take the committee word out, mother of committee.
It's not so much, it's not a committee, but we're asking them to be the conveners.
Of a group.
A working group or a working.
Of a work group of some, of some sort. It's not so much.
That's more powerful to the general public.
Well, I, I think it would be maybe, maybe a little bit more appropriate, I suppose. Because when we develop, when we form a board or a, a committee. And we have to be very clear on what guidelines we present to that committee and what their purpose actually is. There have been committees that have been created long time ago that they just basically dissolved over time. And no one ever went back to the meetings again. But they were never actually formally dissolved.
And I think that brings up like the one that you were talking about earlier, like what would be like the objective one for a subject group like that? Because I think in this situation, law is about, you know, it's out of our hand as far as time goes.
Right.
But, you know, as Jim said, if, you know, when something comes along, having that group in place already would be necessary in order to. Restate the voice of Lake County.
I, I do think you need buy-in from the farmers. You need, you need, you need a few people, you know, from different areas of the county. I would put some names out there like Leon Baker and maybe a few others and stuff on the north end.
And I think a big part too, I mean, because it's just all this stuff's so kind of related. And a lot of it seems to be based off like. This, what this carbon offset study is actually going to look at and what it's going to show. So I think on our end right now, we're in the, we're in the process of formalizing our contract with, with O I T. They have the contract. I proposed to them a contract. So what, when we finalize that contract, we need to find exactly what this study is going to be looking at. And what potential impacts it has on what a county will do. So I think perhaps a good step before forming this committee. More fully understand how it's going to impact and who it's going to impact. And then basic, like community or collaborative group based on.
Another thought too is, so let's say cap and trade happens and we're exempt. And then we talk about being paid for what we've already done. Where, where does that money go?
I was, I was, my, one of my thoughts was is creating more renewables. Since we've offset ours, that we would help the urban areas offset theirs, which we're already going to do, I think.
Or if we get a car, or if that comes in the form of carbon credit, we sell that back to the counties in western Oregon that can't. Can't meet those standards.
And like.
It's bitter, no matter where they're at.
How they're generated is something that I'm not super familiar with, but I do think.
I'm not super familiar with it either.
Owners of these renewable energy projects are the beneficiaries of these carbon credits. So I think if we're generating carbon credits, the owner of that project is the one who has the opportunity to put those in it.
They have sold some of them already. But my argument against that is, you know, I'm not an electrician or an expert. But electrons flow to the least resistant area. So if you create solar in Lake County, it's used here, these electrons. Before they go out. And we're at capacity on the south line after the two megawatt. Community solar goes in, that we lease the land from you guys. That's about capacity. But, you know. We use them here first because it's the least resistance is where they go to. They just don't import them in and out. Like you can control classes of lines.
Right. Because actually, and that's, you know, that's kind of why I was trying to find how you would. What that compensation would look like, you know, for the work that we already have done.
And it's hard to know, but there, there's also the, the factor of the developing carbon market itself. I mean, it's in development. You don't know, we don't know at this time, like what the standardized price for a carbon credit is, you know.
Right, no, I know.
And that industry can be changed and become far more regulated. So it's difficult to try to plan around these like future occurrences right now. Yeah, especially for this kind of.
So the, the real value I see in this is this last cap and trade. The frustration was none of amendments were looked at. With this peer review, when the cap and trade comes back. Anybody within the legislature would be a fool to not look at a county that's offsetting a hundred percent plus.
Absolutely.
And it may be the tool to get some amendments into the cap and trade, which was totally blocked of any amendments. All of our local legislators were very frustrated. So that this is a tool that we can get ready for to build, have that argument, get some of those amendments in there that may help. Many counties across Lake, across the state. I, I'm really intrigued on the carbon credits above and beyond. But that's all going to be dictated by the way they're going to be allowed to be sold and to sell. And I think you're exactly right. Whoever produces that solar farm, build that solar farm will probably have the right to those credits, not counties or anything. I really, I really think it's a political tool, even though we're trying to stay away from politics, to give amendments to the next cap and trade. Because you know that people that are pushing cap and trade, they're working very hard on it right now.
And I believe Stevens County, I don't know, but all the windows that they have. So I think we can make the east side coalition pretty strong on this. Jim thinks that. I didn't tell the funders the political side that, that we're thinking about here, but I think that's the reality that can happen.
I mean, that is important for L C R I though, because if we do come associate, you know, supposedly associate with political movement. I mean, that, that's going to close the door on funding opportunities like this for us in the future, most likely. We can come very quickly.
As long as we don't spend their money politically, the funders, nonprofits.
You're bringing information forward to a government body, factual information, is what you're bringing. And politically, we'll use that as a tool. So you, you, I, I believe that you should be bold.
But right now, I don't think.
Well, you're, you're bringing factual data forward by peer review.
And I think the west side politicians will listen to us once they know we welcome them to the table. I mean, that's my belief. Who knows if I'm right or we're right.
Those, the study and the documentary together, you know, I think that's very, very powerful to give Lake County a voice on, on a state level. And even beyond that. And be taken seriously when it comes to natural resource management and sustainability is doing. I think it's a, a huge opportunity for a massive step up. Looked at as a leader in this field.
Well, I guarantee you, you know, when I went up there and testified, if I'd had a documentary and a. And a peer reviewed study with me, I think they'd listen to a lot better than they did.
Do a job more than two or three months. Yeah. Plus, plus all of the work you do before testifying. And then we just call the column, you know, people that send their representatives. What a great tool, a great tool this can be.
We're very excited about that. We'll keep you guys in the loop as far as initial screenings and stuff. We'll make sure that you guys know what and where those are. So if we, if we ask them all the time, I'm not sure how long we had on the agenda, but I wanted you guys to pick up.
You still have our interest.
Well, if you officially want us to sign as the oversight, whatever you have to do officially, let us know what we're doing.
Well, I, I think we're all three sitting here trying to put our arms completely around. But I, I believe James said it pretty good for you guys to be a convener to bring factual information together to us. And bring up the parties involved. The hard political side, the industry side is so important, obviously, you know. And right on down through there.
Do we want some, at least one point of contact with our board?
Absolutely. I, I have determination. I, I would think of being a sort of like an ex officio that, that goes. I would, I'm volunteering. I, um. I overthink things a lot of times, I guess, but. You know, our, our partners, our federal, state partners. Those jobs within Lake County is very important. Good paying jobs, good benefits, all those things. If we were carbon neutral, it would be more attractive for the forest service to have more employees here. The B L M, the state forestry, on and on because of, you know, they, they use a lot of equipment. A lot of different things. Maybe we're, you know, we need them at the table as we're doing this also. I think that's a factor for the reason why government agencies. Want to tell you, we, we'd lose one federal job here. It affects us a lot. And we have mass turnover at the forest service already.
You know, I, I can't say, and I'm going to be talking to Red Rock and stuff, but Red Rock. Or, Lake County being Oregon's most renewable, that publicity and stuff that we did is part of their consideration.
You're being too humble. There's a reason why they're hearing that a lot to you. Thank you.
We haven't counted an inch of this offset yet either, which I couldn't talk Jeff about doing. If we could do that, if they would have stood out to do that.
We want Red Rock to be in this study for sure.
We have no different. We can just, one, pre-correction puts in the solar. We haven't calculated that in yet either. I mean, that's the potential. And it's worked in several businesses. One, I think is going to put solar on their businesses now.
I'll publicly say this because it's real and it's controversial, but the Blue Marmot is still active. And it's still going through that process. It's real controversial. But that, when you mention the prison, if Blue Marmot builds out that direction. That gives a better opportunity for the prisons to build a crazy new that year.
And we, so as far as the study goes too, we haven't ironed out those details about, you know. Are you going to include projects that are just like being huge to be built? Or are you going to hold? Or are you going to only include projects that are in the process of being built or only projects that have already been built and are operational? I think, you know, ideally it'd be nice to be able to section that out so you could have a section for each of those things and add or subtract based on that information.
I included in the original analysis that I took the old study of this, basically tried to calculate where it might be. I included those in the planning commission's doc that had already received planning commission approval. Not built yet, but received approval. I didn't include ones that hadn't got approval yet. So I figured that was close enough, if they they work hard enough and building a man camp, they're pretty well, good chance going, you know. Been to the planning commission, so I included those in.
I do know in Sherman County, there is more wind energy being built. That's for the population up there that's actually probably some of their property. Wind generation.
For wind though. Wish we could figure something out one time too.
Do you say I should be more friendly to my family?
We had wind looked at this county and every place they looked, it was too much work to do alone. But we've got, we also got the geothermal that needs to be finished out. We've got some good, excellent geothermal. Build up to thirty megawatts each. Yeah, but I didn't include any of that. Original study I did include was out of geothermal building because we thought we were going and the bottom half plan was even lower, which didn't happen. So you never know. But those things came along.
Yep. Indeed.
Go ahead. Uh, just quick update on our other projects. Uh, so we secured contract last month with Energy Trust of Oregon, so we are now doing energy based work for the community. Um, and for the remainder of the year, we're going to focus on uh commercial operations as well as city and county owned buildings. Uh, the program that we're really going to start pushing, uh, and have already started working with some businesses in town is uh LED changeouts for fluorescent bulbs. So anybody who's a business owner, any building that's under twenty five thousand square feet and has four or eight foot fluorescents is uh they can enroll in the program and essentially Energy Trust of Oregon pays the contractor directly to come in and do these installations at no cost to business owners uh or or anybody who owns a building. So we're looking at just all the commercial, the whole commercial business district are going to start assessing these. So if they say they want to do it, we'll coordinate with our local electrician. Uh, he will get paid directly from Energy Trust for going in and installing all the stuff at no cost to business owners, which is very exciting. And and it kind of in tandem with that is a push for more renewable energy. And as Chip mentioned, um, we've again just started working with some businesses to get some uh solar assessments done. We've already had the hardware stores sign up for a forty one kilowatt rooftop system. Um, so that's that's great progress. But for the remainder of the year, we're going to be focusing mostly online and solar work for for commercial operations. And then next year, we'll kind of start moving to residential side things.
So on the solar side, do we have Mr. Rogers for a while? Do you or anybody have any expertise on efficiency of solar panels and your operation?
This is in what sense?
Well, we have them at our fairgrounds and at our road department and we really haven't done any preventative or any updates or any maintenance. And I think they're probably not producing to the level they're capable of. I've mentioned a time, if I would follow it up, I don't, Bob was going to take a look. Wasn't able to stick with it.
As far as refurbishing and making sure that they're operating at their highest efficiency.
Probably see their out, see what their output is and if they're functioning right, you know, I don't know. Who who's the solar expert that we hired to go on looking for these?
Unfortunately, that's one of the biggest issues with pushing rooftop solar projects in Lakeview is that we don't have a solar contractor. So we have to work with external contractors that are coming down from like Bend or Klein Falls or even Eugene in the hardware stores case. But I'd be happy to to try to reach out to some of those folks and just ask a question and see if, how would you feel about looking at efficiency and see if they're in the right operation.
Yeah, they're sure pushing seven, eight years old.
Yeah.
Maybe nine.
Okay.
Their efficiencies do go down.
They they do go down, but they're not always functioning well and um while we're at the bit and tariff, forty nine cents a kilowatt, which should be countless. What did you give it?
Fifty.
Yeah, anyways, go ahead.
Yeah, so so that's kind of the Energy Trust, the energy we're we're focusing on right now. Um, we're also writing group grants for those projects. So along with getting all the Energy Trust incentives and the tax rebates for that project of hardware store, we'll be submitting USDA grants to cover like twenty five percent of the project costs. Which if they get that grant, bring that additional money and that brings down the payback period on a pretty large system of like two years. So in all reality, maybe pretty much getting free energy for uh the remainder of life of those panels. But when it comes to economic development, there's a big push to support rooftop solar projects and energy efficiency because it's a reduction in overhead costs in the long term of support. So that's kind of what we have going on on the energy side of things. On the forestry side of things, we are in the middle of restructuring the Lakeview Se位置 Group Collaborative. Um, and they're moving from their their historical focus on the sustainable unit to a focus on the the entire free modeling even national forests. So a way of thinking about that is essentially a merger between the Land of Lake Forestal Partnership and the existing Lakeview Se位置 Group. And that'll come along with more frequent meetings, uh, kind of in tandem with K L F H meetings. So like we're still in the process of forming a logistics together, but it's been formalized that that is what's going to happen. So we expect to start having the expanded collaborative meetings within uh the next month or the next two months. And as you guys also may have heard, uh, they are reviewing the east side screens to eliminate, look at changing up the twenty one inch rule. So I'd be happy to keep folks in the loop about that as well because that's a pretty contentious issue because that's some uh big economic impacts for Lake County.
One of the key collaborators from the environmental groups has stated when we started bringing this up, looking at over the twenty one inch side screens goes, you know, I love big trees, but I understand what you're saying when they have to rethink. You know, that that's major movement.
That's huge.
Huge with the major environmental.
Absolutely, it's just a a regional effort to look at revising something that's contentious is the twenty minute rule is, it's a good indicator that um
Well, there's stands with the choke that have too many big trees taking up moisture and nutrients that are getting no young growth. And so not every stand you should take out all the twenty one, should take out some twenty one inch trees. But some stands you definitely do if you want future stand.
You need various stands that are right density. To me, it's relatively simple, but I've been to meeting after meeting hearing about that twenty minutes.
The love of big trees within certain groups has kept science out. Too many times we don't look at science, we look at promotions and sometimes that's what happened.
I I think that's all 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 I have right now.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Um, I actually did have one question, I could take a bunch of those and stuff, but the uh going back to something you talked about earlier in one of your emails about the uh um kind of a subcommittee that was being formed for uh the Forest Health Partnership.
The collaborative.
Yeah, the collaborative.
Yeah. So the the collaborative group is going to be under the governance structure of the K L F H P but operate as a subcommittee. So it's not going to be associated with K L F H meetings. So we'll have like separate collaborative subcommittee meetings with folks that are, you know, focused just on like more collaborative based forest management stuff. So, you know, federal forest management. So it's going to, it's going to, I guess, like complement the K L F H P scope work, but we'll operate uh independently as a subcommittee.
Okay, and that hasn't got a name yet or?
Not yet.
Not yet.
All right, we don't, we haven't even hosted the first meeting of this new expanded. Still in the process of seeing if Google wants to participate and defining who's exactly in that subcommittee. It's all ahead.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, okay, I'll shoot you an email when you're back. Nope, let's hammer on through.
Kenny Cooper. Sir. Kind of hard.
Sorry.
See you guys.
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just kind of check out here first. Is this the extent of the heat?
I I I don't know.
I told him that I wasn't going to do that anymore.
Yeah, thanks.
There's a motion on the table.
These guys.
Sorry, so.
So.
Okay, back business.
That should open up.
Drop my on the.
Put a perspective on your request, sir. Go ahead, what's your request?
So I'm requesting from the board to ask um approval for the hire of an A level electrical and structural inspector when at such time arrives. Basically, meaning that if our current A level electrical inspector for whatever reason decides to leave, we have implemented in that. Like hire one.
So so while you're restructuring your department, uh, would be, as we talked through this today, it wouldn't be anything that would happen immediately. It'd give you the opportunity to restructure as.
Just trying to do what comes along.
Just trying to be proactive. Go in and try to keep the media eyes on and cross before you get back. Okay, so um, you you talked to us individually, one of my concerns whenever we talked was uh sustainability, we're looking at for able to fund, so on that part. I do know that you're coming in a little bit higher on your beginning fund balance than was proposed. What other projections are? If we were to restructure and get this A level structural and electrical person on, that will have revenues, quite a bit of opportunity for revenues. That person also through training and everything with those type of skills would probably be able to take out more duties after some training, which would be more dollars that we're sending out to county town. And I follow in pretty much the direction that you.
Correct, the the direction I want to go with, we we uh, let's name bigger projects, we send out plans, uh, third party. Let it review forces of it, which um I can state now, we can get certified to your in-house whether it's review, which means charge accordingly out.
So not only would those dollars be very low, but it helps sustain this position of the efficiencies. Would you see for the the building and everything, for it to go through the process possibly faster sort of?
Correct, yeah, because it would be just just fit for this county or Lake County versus versus the third parties to have it for several.
Well, it seems like that's what I've heard on training these bigger projects and everything is is it gets held up because it's in a queue and it's going to be looked at. Where that with the person on is able to review those, it could, they could change their work schedule.
Yeah, I do that through the faster.
I do that as of now on the residential side and so. Very quick. As far as part of residential plan, I'm looking more so on the commercial end of it. Other thoughts or questions?
Would it be a temporary position to start?
So yes, thank Mark, that would be, it would, so it wouldn't classify as temporary position, it'd be a full time position. At the start, it was, it would be i- in order to obtain the insurance on the county's own, they have to maintain a twenty hour. There's a twenty hour um minimum uh in order to have that insurance. And and uh so for for a few months, it would be uh the set twenty hours uh filled. Get activated and um some other issues that are taken, taken care of.
So you're you're looking for the opportunity to hire and hiring, you may decide to go with less hours.
There are.
There are.
There are.
You you could or could not, one of the words were hours you advertise.
Correct, it it's all.
Whatever applies.
Be molding, molding around, you know, of what's current situation, what's happening, what what the dynamics of in construction is going on. There's a, there's a, there's so much with everything going on right now, there's so, so many of the domes and trying to mold.
Well, the idea of those that that position will fund itself.
Correct, and and be a full time, uh, forty hour, thirty hour, or five hour.
Too late for this.
Exactly. But I don't want to classify it as a hard like.
So so budget wise, you have to, we have to adjust your budget accordingly. We've been working with things of your budget would reflect a full time position.
Correct.
For start July one. If you did not use that or hire it July one, the savings within your budget that you would be expending later on.
Correct.
Um, so um I like the idea, it tells me a lot to get there. But because of um, you know, we're looking at possible recession slash depression. Need things to be.
Depression slash recession.
Yeah, uh, have to be sustainable. I've seen a lot of ups and downs in the building world and having building official. I believe it may be an opportunity so that whenever that does hit us hard, we're not the one trying to contract with another county. Another county is trying to contract with us at some level. And we have the expertise and we take it as an opportunity to bring more revenue. It's really a challenge for you on the other side and your contractors, everybody's needing a building official here, an inspector. Get around the contract, by the way, his way for the inspection years ago or the climate. Yeah, so getting ahead of the ball game, I I got more warm and more acceptable to it.
But we'll talk about renewable energy and so on and so forth.
Yeah, it's it's a gamble.
It's a gamble.
It's a gamble. But I I I really think it's the level of expertise you're talking about.
Yeah, and and so with this position, eventually I'd like to, you know, work in uh so so class can or Lake County can be a full service. So so we'd be taking on, we'd be adjusting um like my money through Thursday to also incorporate Friday. So so whether this person goes from Tuesday to Friday or how we want to work it. So everything's, inspections can be done and kept up, you know, and all week better.
I I think that's great, though. We generally don't get into the middle of the department.
Right.
We may throw out some recommendations every time. You're not a true. I, the the more coverage we have, we are public service. So this would, you got some numbers or and the budget has to reflect this and we're in a budget hearing as we speak.
Yeah.
What do we have to do to the board of commissioners if we're going to approve this and budget wise?
So I would, you know, approve moving ahead with building this position in the twenty twenty one budget. And then before we adopt, uh, we'll discuss about exactly what those numbers are.
It's within the guidelines of the budget block to build just that much.
Yeah. And yes, I do, that beginning fund balance will be higher than the projection. It's hard to anticipate if if that's. If, if that's going to just offset a reduction permits, we don't know yet.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll go ahead and make that budget adjustment proposal for your approval before June seventeenth.
So, what's before us, is we need a motion to approve the restructuring and addition of Level A structural and electrical. I'll make a motion to approve um restructuring for uh make way for a Level A structural and electrical position. Second, motion's been made, seconded to approve the restructuring of the building department as discussed. Further discussion? We're, we're still weighing his position, right? So, so further discussion, it's not proposed for any additional general knowledge to go into this position at this point, no. So, this is an enterprise fund, it's base ground, fees.
Correct.
Right? All in favor?
I, I most appreciate it.
You better.
I agree, I do.
Yeah, totally, I agree.
At, at these times, it's a struggle.
It, it is a struggle.
It's a struggle.
I'm trying to do, like I said, just trying to be proactive.
I, I appreciate it, and I really think that I'd rather be ahead of the ball than behind it, or doing it. You said depression slash recession, I don't know.
We don't know, we don't know, but I do.
But I don't either.
No, none of us do, and we're, we're trying to continue moving forward with county business, and what do you feel certain is necessary to be done? We're trying to be cautious and everything else, yes, but I really do appreciate the fact that you took time to come and sit with all three of us and go over this, and uh, both of them.
Especially when you're still on probation.
Is there, is there emotion when the?
Yeah.
Shots fired. Hold on. Second.
Take stand probation.
No, is there emotion when the?
Let that go by.
Discussion eighty months for thirty-six months.
Chair, I, I'm making an objection, no lack of emotion, so. Can we clarify that?
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
You have a good rest of the day.
Yep.
Are you? Today or?
Uh, tomorrow, but yeah, I do need to, I need to chat with you.
Yeah, we need to chat.
Fort Rock tomorrow.
Yeah, we're gonna be in Fort Rock tomorrow.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
I did see that.
No, so if we're there, Ken will probably be there till last night.
You know what?
Well, are you guys, are you guys adjourned for lunch or anything?
Well, I, 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 I have a chair that screwed up, today's a work session, I'm so used to combined sessions, that's, we're supposed to make this decision tomorrow.
He asked to take action today.
Oh, really?
Because I did.
Yeah.
Cause he doesn't know how long he's gonna be here.
Alright.
Yeah, I still have a little bit.
Yeah.
I, I just.
I'm still on probation.
I thought halfway right.
No, no, that was true.
I nailed it.
You nailed it.
Thank you.
I don't think any other guy will get that many.
See, thanks, Ann.
Yeah.
Ann, would you like to come up?
No.
First thing before we get to doing what's audit, I will ask one more time, is there any comments on your budget hearing that's open? We cleared the room. At nine minutes after twelve, we will close the first budget hearing, no comments on our budget at this time. Then I will move right along again to the audit contract.
Yes, you have two documents before you um from our Unqaw Valley Financial Auditors. One is the letter of engagement, which spells out both their responsibilities and how they test, and then our responsibilities and what information we have to provide. It, it's also a little bit of a disclaimer, they want, they want management to understand that they do not audit every single transaction that we do here at the county, so they, they go through a process of looking at our risk um and assessing, you know, where it's most prudent to go in and, and check transactions, and then they do those tests, so. It's just good information, I think, to understand exactly what, what the roles are, so that requires um a management signature, signature and a governance signature. And then the contract has been reviewed by Jim Bailey and is also in line with their remember, we went out for bid for auditors, last year was our first year, the amount stated here, the being not to exceed thirty-six thousand five fifty is in line with what they originally bid a year ago, so um that requires a Lake County signature as well. Are there any questions or comments about it?
So, well, oh, sorry, you know, if you, I was just gonna ask a question on a signature, I, when I was reading these, who exactly signs what? You get the management signature and the governance signature.
Um, let's, for the management signature, I mean, J or I can sign that, and then for the governance signature, the chair or on the press can sign that.
Okay. That's appropriate. Yeah, that was, that was a cool wanted to clarify that in terms of who's.
So, um on the current audit, or the schedule would come back or anything?
Like an exit review?
Yeah.
No, they um I have to say that they overloaded themselves a little bit last year, and so we it was kind of a last minute even audit submission for them, for us, it is online at the Secretary of State's website, all those things have been done. And then, like, by the time they got all that done, is when virus things started occurring, so they shut down traveling. In fact, um, I need to go back and look at dates of when they're looking to be back here on site. Initially, they were looking at us doing everything through the portal, so they, they weren't even looking to come back on site at all, it was all going to be done electronically. So, when they, I think that's kind of boosted up a little bit now. I think I need to look back at the schedule and see when they are planning on being back on site, but then they would be available to answer questions about last year's audit too.
So, maybe, I don't remember if we've received all of last year's audit.
Yeah.
Trying to remember the findings, there was no findings and all that.
They do um they do approach the audit a little bit differently than we're used to at Oster, and Oster had been our auditors for, oh my goodness, more than twenty years. Unqaw Valley Financial is much more um really truly overall assesses our overall risks, and, and that's the new guidance that comes out for auditors too, and then just kind of goes into those areas. Does, does other testing too, but a different approach than what Oster had.
Yeah. They're going to be able to do it all remotely, should ever reflect the cost in it at all, the thirty-six five.
Well, they, they say that that thirty-six five only includes um travel costs of a thousand fifty, so you're right, if they do not show up on site, we will not pay that thousand fifty.
Alright, we're action tomorrow, any other questions? Perfectly from me, man. On the contract issue, I'll call you. Alright.
You know, just to make a comment about auditing, they were one of two that even submitted a proposal. The E S B did not get any, any proposals that were within acceptable prices for them, I mean, literally really expensive from the one proposal they received, so Unqaw Valley Financial did pick them up as a client. But I'm curious, especially this year with virus things, what happens down the road with municipal auditing in Oregon? Oregon requires it every year, and by a and, and like private auditor, the state of Washington does it through the state of Washington for municipalities, it is not through a private auditor. I think times are changing for municipal audits in Oregon. Um, it's just too hard to find people that are willing to put in the hours that audits require, and, and then governments have a tough time seeing the value in that audit, it's very expensive, and then what? You know, it, it gives us some reassurance, but maybe not the greatest public benefit.
Well, if the public side of it's real challenge for most audit firms, correct, but not to state given, I, I know on SCOW, if we, we pay unbelievable amount of dollars because there's federal dollars come through for audit.
Right, so the single audit threshold, I think it was supposed to go up, it used to be five hundred thousand dollars in federal money required a single audit. Their cost for a single audit is only two thousand dollars. Um, but that's because they're already doing a lot of the work in our regular audit to make that single audit kind of right there, so the threshold for federal dollars, I think, went up, and then Unqaw Valley Financial actually clarified with, I think it was the state of Oregon, clarified that our secure rural schools dollars do not require a single audit. They went back and forth on that, saying that and it's because of the nature of those dollars, they come out for general use, general road use, general school use, and so it's like Pilt money. It's general government use, so the federal government has kind of issued guidance saying we, you're going to spend it, we know you are, it's not as uh, it's not like a grant that says you have to spend it on X Y Z, and we're gonna audit that you spend it on X Y Z. So, it, it's possible that if we didn't have FAA grants, if we didn't have the railroad grant, if we didn't have um the federal highway administration grant that ran through the road department, we could potentially see ourselves in a position where we don't do a single audit. Now that those thresholds have gone up, plus they don't look at Pilt or secure rural schools as an auditable federal funding stream. It's kind of, it's interesting. At least I think it is, you guys could go with some other.
Not to say in your world, very.
Well, I mean, I gotta say, we all, we, we all have to do work that maybe is not appreciated. I wonder if you guys understand how many hours we spend on the audit.
My goodness.
And then like you're saying, did you go online and look at it? So, to me, it's like, it is a lot of hours and work to kind of get those checkboxes marked. But really, no, no, not a lot of reward.
I have to say, I'm much more appreciative today than years ago, as especially since it's moved pretty, when you see more now, because there's more in our face. Fifteen years ago, it's okay, it's not it. And I'm much more appreciative than I, I do hear what you're saying.
I'm just glad there's somebody like you that likes that.
Six sense of numbers, pay the work and statements, so, yeah.
Because that would suck if I had to do that. For everybody.
I think, I mean, I guess I appreciate, you know, that's the beauty of our county government, lots of teamwork goes into all of this.
Well, you, you know what, commissioners, it's not it, it's sort of interesting, you think about it, is if, if we want something looked at, we have to ask, and then we're pointing the finger at ourselves. And that's sort of, as commissioners, we're uncomfortable, but our duty as the administrative officers is to have those things looked at. And it's really, because there have been time or two that I've probably reluctantly not done, maybe asked them, some departments or this, but it's really unique, and we sit here and say, well, I would like this department to have a little bit stronger audit. Well, then if it comes out bad, which is the right thing to find out about, but if we're pointing the finger at ourselves and
Right.
And uh, that's honestly a personal challenge at times, whenever you have such faith in your county operations.
I would suggest that when there are um questions or concerns, that there's discussions with the departments themselves first, to understand what their processes are. What internal controls they do have in place, what is their understanding of their dollars, and then from there, ask for the auditors to step in and assist. They are a, they are wanting to help us as well, you know, and so it shouldn't, I, I like to look at, at the audit as a a tool to learn and grow and improve, it is not a gotcha tool, in fact, it shouldn't be, we shouldn't be letting things go to the point that now we're gonna use it as a gotcha, it, it should be a let's, let's make sure we're doing the best we can with the resources we have available to us, we are a small organization, we wear a lot of hats, but where can we improve? And it also provides a tool to the public to say, yeah, that we can trust them with how they are accounting for things, how they're handling money, how their um internal controls are set up, so there's, you know, that's how I look at it, I would, I, I don't, it shouldn't be used as a gotcha tool, and I think.
I'm not saying use it as a gotcha tool, but it's not, what, what any world it's like. They, they come through and their biggest push is internal control on, on your um cash. Because there's been embezzlement someplace, so we move our energy to looking at them, and next time it's, it's on council pay or some of their payroll and all this, and you're just, this, this things all the time, and whenever, at least with Oster, they come in and sit down, talk with us individually, it's commissioners, and almost what do you want us to look at? It's sort of that, that feeling is, oh, I'm missing something type thing, and not, not use it as a gotcha, I think that audit is a great tool, and we need to use it better than what we do, because it is a glimpse in places, it's not, there's no way that we can audit everything.
Right.
And so, I, I, I agree with you, it's a tool, not only for commissioners, but the department heads of the elected officials, and we should sit down and say this is a tool.
And it does, they, they have to stay up on credits and education and things like that, and they are watching what shows up in the news as far as fraud or embezzlement or you know, risks to public dollars, and so it does steer them in different directions at times based on what trends need to be for.
Well, and it's a very real thing, too, I mean. I was just reading something about it actually, just the other day, I was reading about the college, they've uncovered through some of those things, and we have a hotline for it, so. It's true. Alright.
It's not one eight hundred, how's my audit? That's funny.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work on this, Ann.
Oh, yeah, and then I will travel with you guys tomorrow, that's, well, I should ask, is the meeting going to be this, like a long one tomorrow?
I, I. Should not.
So, is.
No, we got most of, all our presentations were today.
Okay.
Right, so, and most of the presentations are what, what made it so long today, so.
So, we probably would be back in town by two-ish, you think?
I would think so.
If I travel.
I'll call that.
Are you going to lunch?
Yeah. Thank you for the invite.
I, I'm, I'm traveling separate, I'm probably going up tonight, so uh, whenever you guys end up, so.
Well, I'll, I'll be along then.
They're all in charge.
Okay.
Mick, what time we leaving?
I don't know.
Fort Rock.
Well, Fort Rock, you guys probably leave, yeah, seven thirty to eight.
I'm driving, all of us, ma'am?
Yeah, I will.
Why drive? You drive.
I'm not driving, I'm passing through. Alright.
Okay, I'll see you guys.
Alright.
I'm being audited August seventeenth by the Federal Transit Administration for fifty-three thousand dollars, they set that date. So, I was supposed to have the audit in May, but then with the coronavirus, they postponed it, so now they'll be here in August.
Amazing how much stuff is used as an excuse for people to do their job during coronavirus.
Um, and our next item is.
I'm starting to get angry.
Because I'm, today I'm ready to go off. I just, I'm checking myself, not getting that.
Um, that's, that's true, I, I probably need to be checked out.
Next is um elder youth awareness proclamation, is that for today or tomorrow?
Today.
Alright.
Which ones, the upper?
The, or elder youth awareness.
Or elder abuse awareness day. The elder abuse.
Yeah, it's a proclamation, the triple A does it every year.
I thought we were.
They just have a day every year to acknowledge elder abuse awareness.
Okay.
They, I think it's the sixteenth, they wanna have the days this year to.
Okay, so I thought we were taking that off the agenda or something because there was still more work to be done on.
That's the resolution I wrote.
Okay.
There is a scheduling issue, resolution.
Right now, okay. All right, I apologize, this, we're we're working on twenty twenty dash zero two C.
So we have a proclamation before us. Uh, entertain a motion and then we read it all. All make a motion to accept uh in the matter of proclaiming June twen- uh fifteenth twenty twenty as elder abuse awareness day in Lake County, Oregon. Seconded discussion. Motion been made with seconded from the discussion.
Um, we'll have to read this, correct?
Yes.
Would you like me to read it?
Are you offering? I've read it many times, so I would love.
Well, that's why I.
I would love for you to read it, uh honestly, I would, I would.
No, I I figured I'd just volunteer.
Absolutely.
All right. In the matter of proclaiming June fifteen twenty twenty as elder abuse awareness day in Lake County, Oregon. Whereas thousands of vulnerable seniors and people with disabilities are victimized every year by financial exploit exploitation, physical, sexual and emotional abuse or neglect. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or in in con- estated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and suburbia. And whereas these incidents of abuse and neglect take place in the home and facilities and are perpetuated, per- perpetrated by family members, friends, caregivers and strangers. And whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported because the el- because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas signs of animal abuse and neglect are an elderly warning, early warning signs of senior need for assistance. All citizens are encouraged to work together in reporting animal cruelty for the welfare and safety of our vulnerable seniors and people with disabilities. And whereas the Oregon law enforcement community, adult protective service staff and advocates have forged a stronger working relationship through community-based multidisciplinary teams to prevent and prosecute abuse and neglect. And whereas Oregonians need to be better informed on preventative measures and the indicators of abuse and neglect. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Lake County Board of Commissioners that June fifteenth two thousand twenty is designated as as elder abuse awareness day in Lake County, Oregon. We encourage all citizens of Lake County to unite as a community to support our aging people with disabilities.
Unendated.
Unendated. This day.
Second. Second.
June second of two thousand twenty.
Perfect. Thank you for reading that, so all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Uh, I, we have manufactured home tax write-off for tomorrow, do I don't believe we need Dave here for this, or was he wanting to be here? Very small amount. We've done this a couple of times.
No, he said, didn't think he needed to be here for this, this is just some housekeeping. They did a title search on this piece of property and it came up as still being our prop- personal property account. Um, the total assessed value was like eleven dollars and seventy six cents or something, I think, something like that. Off the top of my head and so it's just one of those things that didn't get picked up with the other ones, they did a couple months ago.
You missed that one.
Yeah. So in order to sell the property, we need to, the the pro- the personal property um account has been destroyed, he's verified that it was destroyed and now we just need to take it off the roll.
Yep, so tomorrow we'll do that, we have the petition, we have to order, the total amount of forgiveness is three dollars and eighty cents, I believe. No, it's eleven, it's eleven ninety something, I'm sorry, I didn't have it all together, eleven twenty nine.
Uh, it's eleven.
Oh.
So unless there's further discussion, that's for tomorrow.
That's fine.
All right, the resolution was taken off. Uh, the older purchase was taken care of.
The resolution is, is that taken off for today or and that'll be on tomorrow or?
No, we're teething it until the sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Dan will be here on the sixteenth to do that.
Sounds good.
Upfit, upfit, but but, outfit. Stay with me, Commissioner, stay with me. Melanie, we have that, uh, that's a sole source or something.
Yeah, this is a sole source in Oregon, I ran it by Mr. Bailey, he didn't see any issues. Um, at first my jaw hit the floor because it's expensive, but then I looked back to last year and he spent twenty nine thousand three hundred twenty dollars per vehicle up fitting them. So we're saving a little bit of money from last year. And then I asked him if I could get some sort of discount and he said he'd work with me for some certain parts getting discounts on those, so that government rate too, so. My max is twenty seven five sixty five oh one per vehicle and that part of that will come out of fund two, six, the towns fund and part of it one oh eight R fund.
Vehicle in each.
A vehicle for each county and town.
Melanie, thank you for looking at efficiencies, I know this come to you, but you're looking at efficiencies, trying to give it to government discount and everything. That was one of my requests was to find efficiencies that were out there and everything, so that's start, thank you. Appreciate that. Every every dollar adds up to a big dollar, so, all right. That's for action tomorrow.
Please.
Um, and you have another item, recommendation on.
Yeah. So I have to start working on my state transportation improvement fund application, it's due in November. So I have to do some housekeeping, get my committee together and have some hearings and things for public input. And so it's quite a process and then in part of that process, I need to shore up my committee. I realized that we haven't been keeping track of term limits in quite some time, so I reached out to all of my committee members and asked them, do you still want to um participate? There were a couple that didn't want to, they didn't respond or they didn't want to participate. But I still have enough with what's um, what's required by the bylaws by the state. And um, it's a good split geographically, I was worried that some people might only wanna participate in different regions. But it worked out great, I have um the two providers. Um, and then I have two different committee members in each area. So that was great and then I arbitrarily assigned term limits. Uh, one of them will be two, some of them are two and one are, some of the term limits are one and we'll just re-up them.
Okay.
Just, just to stagger them a little.
A little way it on the stack, staggered that way.
Yeah, just so.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, because we haven't kept track of this for years.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I've always thought, oh gosh, I'm just blessed to have people who will be willing to participate with this stuff because it's tedious sometimes and it's a lot, so I have the list presented for you guys to review and hopefully through tomorrow.
Perfect. All right, you have anything else?
Um, no, um, my fifty three ten S T F application is due end of January. And this is, and the S T I F is due the end of November. But I like to kick them in early, just in case there's some room for improvement or if there's any question in progress.
All right, um, I have a couple things on days on. Did get a call yesterday on the railroad um from Toby. There's a tax credit, thirty five hundred dollars a mile that we have no way of leveraging that tax credit or whatever. Um, just part of the group would like to leverage that. And so he is willing to invest into the railroad significant amount and be able to use that tax credit. I give thumbs up, that's hasn't been used forever. Widen and a lot of work to get that there, it's okay. Um, anyways, that's good news. The bad news about that is an investment, I'll use the number, a hundred thousand plus could be invested in our railroad doesn't count for match for our prison grant because it's federal.
Figured you were on there.
Federal thing, but it still means that we're going to have that kind of program involved. So I wanted to make sure you guys knew, I didn't know if you called you and you didn't think you did, so I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that to take the payments to that tax break and I, I was like, wow, double thumbs up accordingly. So and you guys got the email just sort of, public uh record, uh, emergency business assistant uh grant that we put in for, we set aside the twenty thousand dollars along with SCOWET twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we did get funded, us and Clamath County, it's a partnership that is at forty percent of the award. So we will be contributing ten thousand dollars and SCOWET will contribute ten thousand dollars and Ratcham on the climate side too. So that was the unfortunate part, but we still have a small one, so Betty's working on that. She had to have that in my last night, I thought I saw that. I didn't see the email and she's going to apply for the next round, which doesn't have no match, which is good, so. Um, I would like to see it funded at a higher level, but at least they threw us a bone, I guess, lack of better words. Want to make sure that we have at least the acknowledgement of that in the public. Um, work with Betty to, you know, I would like to, I would like to send direction from here on that, if the board is willing. What my thoughts were, we talked about it, we didn't send the direction, but I think the first one is to leverage that small amount of dollars should be the ones that weren't eligible for any of the, well, that's part of the guidelines, weren't eligible for other dollars. But I'm I'm going for the barber's, the physician, the fitness center's that mandatorily shut down should be first in line, right, I've received the ballot. And I'd like for us and the board to send that direction to Betty, that's our preference. You know, from there, I I don't know, the guidelines first come first serve, I guess is only the real way, but what do you guys think about?
I agree. Perfect. I think I think that uh, the ones that have been affected, I think they should have first shot. Okay, there's some, because not all businesses have been affected by COVID in a negative way, some businesses have done quite well.
Yeah, well, and and I'm not overlooking our restaurants, but they've been able to operate at some level.
It's true, it's true.
Other ones are just, um, takes a little bit, you're done, shake your doors and you're you're out of the past, go business.
Not all restaurants could could do just the takeout, but uh, it's true that's.
So that should be on a priority list to the restaurants, we're not able to do the takeout and they're back open now, because some don't fly on anything, but if they're back open now, right? So anyways, so consensus is for the ones that were immediately shut down by the executive orders would be all restaurants for first.
Yes.
Did you get that to, consensus with the board, did you get that to Betty for us in the right furbage?
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate that, um. Being the axory is now over.
You, beans I brought that to attention, you're you're going to you're going to beat that one, is that hard to say?
Yes, sir.
At least it wasn't ice cream, it could be a lot nicer.
Uh, he's still, he he's out, he doesn't, he's not sure what I'm talking about with the axory thing, so.
I should, I told you this about the axory.
Oh, and paste you.
And paste.
But you guys are sort of my cohorts, yeah.
And many golf.
I I think I'm a bit thrown out. Did you hear that? You guys are sort of my cohorts.
Yeah.
All right, uh, please some updates, um, uh, I'm anxiously, I know we're out of an update for you, James and Art on phase two and submission and so on. Not to get in the political side, just okay, probably do it first. As you want to go, let it slide. Be prepared for it.
We submitted our letter yesterday. And uh, I'm it's it's not some, I think they they would like counties to submit a request to interface to and this is where I'm gonna start getting a little political, because I'm not submitting a request. Um, I didn't think it proven for Lake County to request to interface to. We, they asked us what we were capable of doing and I told them what they're capable of doing and we are able to meet all their recommendations and even what their requirements are. Lake County is probably one of the most prepared counties in the state to deal with whatever might come our way. And um, we're in good shape and so we submitted the letter, um, I have also been um, had an email chain with the with Tina Edlund on this, on the governor's staff and along with the governor's chief of staff. And I tried to see you guys and a few of those things where I've had a lot of questions. Um, just kind of relaying that to you guys, I've had a lot of questions through the governor's office, but I wanted you guys to see some of the answers that are coming down from the state. So that's kind of my, my take on it so far is that I honestly believe that the governor's office is really struggling to find uh, direction for all the different counties and then in one, one email, they actually went through all the different aspects of the criteria that they have created and said, we know there's problems with this, we know there's problems with this, that's why we do this and we know there's problems with that, so we know this is why we're doing this. And uh, really, when it comes down to it, they need to uh, stop trying to over-regulate the people of Oregon. And uh, because it's proving to be quite a problem by their own words. So that's, that's where I'm at and uh, the, I believe that the phase two plan should uh, we should move, continue to move through that. Um, I believe that people are capable and fully uh responsible enough to self-regulate themselves and to take all precautions necessary to keep the community safe um through self-regulation. And uh, I don't believe that the uh, state needs to or should be policing or uh managing people's lives in the way that they are attempting to do right now. And so uh, um this is, this is what I've tried to convey to the governor's office. I I've been looking around the state and seeing the things that are happening around in different communities and some of the cities in all metro areas where large groups of people are congregating in large groups and there's no response to that really. Uh, the issue for me is uh, these things are allowed to happen, but we can't have our accounting fares. DMV opened up, we talked about this on the call this morning, DMV opens up and they're have, they're getting hit. Um, they're not sure how they can provide service to this many people after they've been closed for this amount of time. We're gonna have the same issue with our schools.
Are you saying that might be the director's fault and they'll replace the director? That, I'm just being facetious.
You're you're being baited right now.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, and I'm I'm presenting an.
The 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 state, the the state has a lot of problems and the reopening plan that we have to go by is failing.
Yes.
Many aspects and it's gotta be shorted.
Yes.
It's gotta be shorted.
And I, and I don't believe that whatever they view as success is that we haven't had a major outbreak. And they view that as a success, but I'm not convinced that the meth, that the, at what cost? That the direction, well, yes, at what cost, absolutely, but what the the direction that the state has taken, I'm not convinced that that is what is prevented a major outbreak in the first place. And so, and and now we're dealing with another issue, another side of this is that major impacts to our county, this, I'm preaching to the choir. Largely, I'm doing this for our public as well, so they. But uh, the impacts to Lake County have life form and socioeconomic impacts. But the impacts to Lake County have by far been socioeconomic impacts, not from the virus. And, and, and it's impacted our county, it's impacted our businesses, it's impacted our, uh, private lives, it's impacted our hospital. But, yeah.
So thank you very much for a lot of things you said, absolutely. For you to understand, in phase two, which was submitted, we, phase two, our grant is June fifth, and in phase two, we also requested less than a statement that between phase two and three, it'd be twenty-one day credit. And I think that's where we're going to be seeing some major challenges. Hopefully, we go on to phase two the fifth. I think we, as a state, we can really push twenty-one days between phase two and phase three. I'm afraid we're going to see a slowdown between those two phases.
Right.
And, and I have not personally seen or believed that the phase opening has impacted a huge amount of virus going out from most people. Now that, yes, within the state of Oregon, where there's some workers that are commuting together, staying together, maybe not social distancing as well, and sanitizing as well, are impacted more, it's spreading faster there. Sometimes I believe that is not doing the self-regulation, as you say. And not understanding that they can slow that down if they must do some progress. But I, I, I'm really afraid that between phase two and phase three is going to be a challenge. Well, to me, the, the, one of the biggest problems is, is that we're, we have to base all these decisions on science. But now they're throwing presumptive cases in the mix that are coming out negative, which I believe we're still at zero here. And they're going to make public comment. I heard the medical community was going to comment on that. And so when you throw in presumptive, yeah, you're going to have a spike. Because anybody with a runny nose or cough or scratchy throat is going to be concerned, so they're presumptive.
It's, it's a big concern.
I'm, I'm, you guys know where I stand. I mean, whether she wants to go twenty-one days or not. My feeling is, we go twenty-one days and then we go to the next phase, whether she says yay or no.
Well, many of these outbreaks that they have had, or whatever you can call them outbreaks, like you were saying, in these groups that, you know, they work together, they stay together, or whatever, you know, that they're in close proximity to each other for large amounts of time, every day. And there's, there's really not a whole lot of ways you can police those things, because life continues to go on. What, what you can do is educate people. And you can rely on that self-regulation a little bit more than what the state has been. And we do that by providing inaccurate information and developing trust. Right now, the state is losing trust with a great many people in the state of Oregon.
When you throw in the presumptive cases now.
Yes, and that's, I was, that's what I was trying to do to.
There's, there's, there's no way we even know if this is real.
We're not going to develop trust with the community when, when we base numbers off of things that it's, it's just, there's a lot of doubt in people's minds and hearts, and we're tasked as elected officials to represent with the public. They, I will review the very last part of this, where I put in for phase three under our requests, that Lake County would like to see no more than twenty-one day timeline for phase two before entering phase three on June twenty-sixth. After reevaluation, after a reevaluation of how successful region seven is in phase two. We feel this method better reflects our response timeline to potential infection rates and our original intent to slow the spread and flatten any spike that may threaten overwhelming our healthcare system. And that is where I would like to bring everyone back to the fact that we never, ever made any of these decisions in order to stop the virus. We did this to slow it, to keep and protect ourselves from overwhelming our healthcare system, we haven't done that. And, and Lake County continues to have zero COVID patients in our hospital.
So why?
And, and, and on, and we have people that are not wanting to go to their, our hospital for operations they need because they are afraid of COVID. So, and that is concerning, because if, as a health concern, that we have to make sure that we're relating to the public instead of to stay calm and, and to make rational decisions based off of information that's, that we're providing. And that's why that pressure is on us to make sure that we're providing accurate information.
So I, I'm, I'm going to go here, you had heard me go here two months ago. And, and that is the tool we have to get things changed in the state of Oregon is our state legislature. We as commissioners have been thrown, this morning, we're thrown down the path of schools. We've been thrown down the path of hospitals. That is not within the parameters of what we work, we support those, and we show support, because there's experts in those fields to checks and balances within the state of Oregon is the lawmakers. Is the state legislature, is ones that are the lawmakers and the policymakers for the state of Oregon. Not just the governor. And I once again say, our lawmakers need to step up and get in session and do some of these checks and balances we're talking about. Take ownership of the DMV, of whatever other state agencies that they're governed to operate throughout the state of Oregon by, by policy, by funding them, and that type of stuff. And so I, I really have some, some challenging moments personally, as I listen to all these calls and everything. And what we're pushed into for our local people, for trying to figure this out. But we're not state lawmakers, and we're not state policymakers, and we're not health professionals. And exactly, and I just echo my words from a couple months ago. We need some leadership to help government, government staff without, through, through, or through the state. I just, I'm not passing the buck, I just don't think that, I, I don't understand. I don't think we're very political, we continue to get political, but I think we've lost the what our goal is to get through this pandemic. I think it's, we spend a lot of time and energy trying to chase these care dollars. You guys hear, we want those care dollars. That's a component, but we've got to get Oregon back to operating, we've got to get things back going within the balance to protect those vulnerable people at all level we're supposed to, and for them to protect themselves and educate them. I, I know I'm going off, I knew that today was probably not the day for me to speak too much, but I just get a little bit surprised that we have a lot of meetings, phone meetings, Skype meetings. And it's sort of individualized, or areas or regions, or this or that, in our state, I just get right back to our states and so on.
Yeah.
So anyways, I'm sorry to go off the grid, but.
Well, and if people don't like the politicalization of this, and they don't like how we're involved in so many aspects of this, or maybe they don't think the commissioners need to be dabbling in any of these areas, where we're, we're, we're working so closely with the state when we're really, we're county commissioners. And we're to be focused on county issues. And we're, we're so entrenched in some of the healthcare side of things, when really, we're, that's not necessarily our field. And if people don't like us in those fields, or working in those realms, then I would ask that they help us get society back to some degree of the normal. If they don't like where this is going, then we've got to decide where we are going.
So all the guidelines, take one phase two, all this opening, those questions come back. What you want to open, and there's state guidelines. I appreciate being at the table and being able to mention that. But there needs to be some direction to state departments, as this is what it's going to be, this is the policy. And I'm not, not saying I don't appreciate being at the table. There needs to be some cloud whenever, whenever we're hearing overwhelming of the DMV, overwhelming of this and that. It is, the, the state policymakers need to work with the state agencies to say, okay, this is going to be the impact. We've been down for two months, three months, when we open up, do we have the, the phone system that's going to handle this? And make sure that happens.
Well, just like phase one, we didn't get the finished guidelines until the day before.
Yeah.
This time, we had them a week before, and then it was still a draft.
It's still a draft.
And, and, and so.
So there's more changes coming, so even though we've submitted our plan, they're still saying that they've got more changes for us in the fight.
And it really doesn't matter, because we can only do what they tell us we can. So we take what they say we can, and you guys, other people have to write to what they say we can do.
That's.
Right. It's.
That's why I didn't submit the Lake County plan for phase two. It's not Lake County's plan. It's the state's telling us, the state telling us what they think we should do, what we shouldn't do. And they want to act, they're asking us what we can do.
They're not thinking we should do it, they're telling us to do it.
Yeah.
And then.
And I, I think I've been further out.
And that's where I'm at, as, as you guys know, my biggest problem isn't necessarily the care dollars. I don't think we're going to get any. My problem is our loss of freedom and liberty to be Americans is being stripped from us without firing a shot. And the longer this goes, the harder it's going to be to get those freedoms back. That's my, and that's why I'm just done meeting their guidelines. Because I shouldn't, I don't think anybody should tell somebody else how they should look. I'll stop there.
Any other liaisons on updates?
I'm glad I asked for you to give an overview.
Honestly, my, I had no liaisons on updates, honestly, because I, I have to apologize to many of my liaisons, as most of my time is been committed to COVID. And I just have not been able to really work on any major projects.
As, as a team, we're covered.
Yes, no, you got, you guys have picked up a lot of the slack that I've left loose, and I really appreciate that.
Well, we, we have great management. That's awesome, so, appreciate that. Nothing further? Are you? Do, do you write with Mel and I and tomorrow? Everybody comfortable being in the same vehicle.
So I'm just waiting to sit.
Pardon me?
You guys just can't wait to sit.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
We will, we will adjourn in one minute.